Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 24th, 2021 meeting of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern, and I am Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation only, and I will be reading a few points regarding those procedures for remote participation in a few moments. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 18 and will also be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. And before I proceed, I do need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It is all right to record the meeting, but you do need to notify us. So regarding the remote participation meeting procedure pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A 18 and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 732-206-781. That's 732-206-781. You can also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that is in the agenda posted on the town website on the Planning Board page. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. As I mentioned earlier, a recording of this meeting will be posted on the town's website as soon as possible. If you are connected by phone and you become inadvertently muted, you can press *6 on your phone. Also, I'm just going to ask for the sake of the clarity of the broadcast, if you have not been recognized by the chair and you are not speaking, would you kindly mute your microphones, either on your computer or on your telephone? Kindly mute your phone. And if you're connected by computer and you're not speaking, with the exception of Planning Board members, could you kindly also turn off your video? That helps for the clarity of the broadcast. I do not have video tonight because I'm joining using my iPhone and I, the video is not functioning, but other Planning Board members, please do leave your video on. Thank you. And let me just go through some procedural steps for our remote meeting, remote participation procedure. I'll start off with a roll call of all board members. When you're recognized by the chair, if you are not a board member, a member of the public, please repeat your name before you speak and also give the last four digits of your phone number if you're connected by phone. This is just to help clearly identify all the speakers on the call. Also, after an agenda item has been discussed by the Planning Board, I'll request for members of the public, citizens who are connected to the call, for comments and questions. And please remember, we just need to have one person speaking at a time, so you do need to be recognized by the chair. When the Planning Board takes votes tonight, we'll do all our votes by roll call. And at the end of the meeting, we'll do a verbal confirmation of the adjournment of the meeting and we'll note the time of adjournment. So let's start with the roll call of board members. Art Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
Thank you. Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, present.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, present.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
And Roger Griffin. Is Roger Griffin present? I thought I saw him connected.
Sorry, Agent, yep, I'm here, present.
Great, thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern, and I am present. And before we go to our first agenda item, I will ask if there are any board members that need to recuse themselves from any items on our agenda tonight. This is Catherine Halpern. I actually do need to recuse myself from the two matters regarding Chatham Bars in 20 Chatham Bars Avenue and 45 Chatham Bars Avenue. Arthur Spru will act as Chair for those two matters. All right, so let's go to our first agenda item, and that is the minutes for the April 26th meeting. I'll just ask Planning Board members if anyone has any additions or changes, corrections to the minutes for April 26th. If there are none, may I ask for a motion to approve the minutes for our April 26th meeting? So I think Warren made the motion. Do I have a second from Bob Wirtschaft? Could you repeat that?
Seconded, Bob Wirtschaft.
Thank you. Let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru.
I was not at the last meeting, so I'll abstain.
Thank you. And Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And Catherine, this is Catherine. I also approve. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and this is in regards to a proposed change in the zoning bylaw for the Town of Chatham. And this is a citizen petition, which is regarding the clarification of the definition of sizes and exemption from coverage calculation for small sheds. Before we begin, I will read the public hearing procedures. The first step is that the public notice will be read by the Planning Board Clerk, who is Roger Griffin. After that, there will be a presentation by the applicant. In this case, Paul Semple will present the points regarding this proposed bylaw change. Then there'll be questions from the Planning Board and comments. Then we'll take any public statements in favor of the application. Then I will read any correspondence that we've received regarding this matter. Then we'll hear public statements opposing the application. There'll be the opportunity for rebuttal by the applicant, which in this case will be Paul Semple explaining this proposed bylaw amendment. Then we'll have time for comments in the board. And if the board is ready to close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations, we will vote on that. Once the hearing is closed and the board is in deliberation, there can be no more public input, and the board will deliberate and take a formal vote regarding the matter, in this case, whether or not to recommend this proposed bylaw amendment to town meeting. So that being said, I'll ask Roger Griffin to kindly read the public notice. Go ahead, Roger. You may be on mute.
Yes, I am. Sorry about that. I talked to, I talked to Ally today regarding three footnotes on the, on the petition. They'd be sort of clumsy or kind of possible if you had to indicate. So I'm going to read the article as it is without really denoting the strike through, the underlines, because it would, it would be clumsy if I, if I even attempted to do that. Okay?
All right. Yes, that's fine. Thank you. Go ahead, Roger.
Article 61, Citizen Petition Article Protective Zoning Bylaw Amendment Clarification of Definition of Sizes and Exemption from Coverage calculation for Small Sheds. To see if the town will vote to amend this protective bylaw zoning in Section 3D 3H, accessory dwellings and structures as follows. H. Accessory Building and Structures. 1. Over 100 square feet in area. All structures accessory to residential use, i.e. including buildings over 100 square feet in area, swimming pools and tennis courts in their enclosures shall be, shall be setback from the street in abutters as required for buildings and structures in Appendix 2, Schedule of Dimensional Requirements, May 14th, 2012 ATM. Number 2. Under 100 square feet or less in area. A single one-story storage structure of 100 square feet or less in area shall not be counted toward the coverage of residentially zoned lots. A. Garden sheds. Garden storage sheds under of 100 square feet or less in the area shall be setback a minimum of one-third the distance of the abutters setback from the property line as required for buildings and structures in Appendix 2, Schedule of Dimensional Requirements. Placement of garden storage sheds within the street setback area are prohibited except by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. There shall be no more than one garden shed located within the required setback area. The building height of these garden storage sheds shall not exceed 12 feet for sheds with gable, gambrel hip, or lean-to, or saltbox style roofs in eight feet for shed or flat style roofs. B. Utility sheds. Utility sheds under of 100 square feet or less in area shall set back the distance of the abutters setback to the property line as required for building and structures in Appendix 2, Schedule of Dimensional Requirements. The building height of these utility sheds shall not exceed 10 feet for sheds with gable, gambrel hip, or lean-to, or saltbox style roofs in eight feet for sheds of, or flat style roofs, according to May 14th, 2012 ATM. Structures under 25 square feet in area. Single-story structures under 25 feet, 25 square feet area in six feet or less in height shall be setback a minimum of one-third of the distance of the abutters setback from the property line as required for buildings and structures in Appendix 2, Schedule of Dimensional Requirements. A single structure under 25 square feet in area in six feet or less in height shall not be counted towards the coverage on residentially zoned lots. Pursuant to the Governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law GLC 30A Sections 20 and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 order imposing limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this hearing of the Chamber of Planning, Chamber, Chatham Planning Board shall be conducted via remote participation. The hearing will be accessed, will be accessed by interested parties and the general public through the following link. Any person interested in wishing to be heard on the zoning proposal shall call the following teleconference join, number to join the hearing. Telephone number is 1-508-945-4410. The conference ID number is 732-206-781.
Great. Great. Thank you, Roger. So now, do we have Mr. Semple connected? Would you like to go ahead with the presentation regarding this proposed change in the zoning bylaw?
Yes, this is Paul Semple. I'm a member of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals, and I was asked by Community Development to just present this Citizen Petition article. This really deals with two issues. The primary issue is that first section, sentence of Section 2, which is that a single-story, one-story store, structure of 100 square feet or less in area shall not be counted toward building coverage on residentially zoned lots. This is designed to deal with small sheds that might otherwise require a special permit or a variance depending upon the extent of the existing building coverage based on the house that may be there. The second portion of it is that Bill Litchfield did the drafting on this and noticed that the existing bylaw talks about sheds which are over 100 square feet and under 100 square feet, but does not talk about a shed which is actually 100 square feet. So the language of this petition is designed to deal with that ambiguity by providing for 100 square feet or less, thereby covering the 100-square-foot provision. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Semple. Let's go on to see if there's any questions or comments from Planning Board members. I'll do this by roll call. Art Spru, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Semple?
I'm Art Spru. I have no questions or comments, Catherine.
Thank you. Warren Chain.
Warren Chain. Only comment I have is that it's, seems like it's long overdue. So no further comments.
Thank you, Warren. Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin believes that this is totally unnecessary.
All right. Any other comments or questions, Tom?
Tom Gagin doesn't have any other questions or comments.
Thank you. Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft has no comments or questions.
Thank you. Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, I don't have any questions or comments. It's just something that should have been passed by the House.
Great. Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, no question or comments.
And this is Catherine. I have no questions or comments. It seems really just a matter of a small clarification and housekeeping. So let's go to see if there are any members of the public who are connected, who would like to make a statement in favor of this application. I think I can see raised hands, but I may ask for Ally's help. Right now, I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Catherine, this is Ally. I'm not seeing any either.
Thank you. And Ally, we don't have any correspondence, I believe. We haven't received any correspondence on this matter.
We have not.
Thank you. So any public, any statements from members of the public opposing this application? Can, I do not see any raised hands.
I don't either, Catherine.
Great. So there's really no need for a rebuttal. I think the board has made comments. We should take a vote if we want to close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations. Once we enter formal deliberations, there's no further audience participation. And I will anticipate that the board will go directly to vote, and what our vote would be, would be to either recommend or not to recommend this proposed bylaw change to annual town meeting. So let's vote if we would like to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion in that, to that effect?
Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion?
Roger Griffin, I'll second.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote to close the public hearing. Art Spru.
Art Spru, I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, I approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, I approve.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, I approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, I approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, I approve.
And this is Catherine. I also approve that we close the public hearing. So let's move to a vote. I will suggest that we could have a motion to recommend this proposed bylaw amendment, citizen's petition to annual town meeting. Do I have a motion to that effect?
This is Warren Chain. I still move.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion?
Bob Dubus, second.
So let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin abstain.
Thank you, Tom. Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Dubus approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. So we have six approve and one abstention to recommend this citizen's petition to annual town meeting. Thank you. Thank you all. So now we'll go on to our next item on the agenda, which is an approval not required. And I think it's Thad, are you here to present this matter?
Thad, I am. Thad Aldrich, Erie, Southeast.
Please go ahead, Thad.
Sure. So we have two little lots at the end of Willow Bend. And the proposal is to straighten out a lot line between them. The original went at quite an angle. The occupation out there has been pretty much in line with what we're, what we're proposing. The neighbor's patio is on, patio for 19 is on 27. And this will rectify that. The wall that was recently rebuilt on 27 will remain on 27. And the area within the right-of-way is going to remain the same. So it does end up with a little jog there, but that was the best that we could do to, to make everything work. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great. I'll just go through the board. If you have any questions on this for Thad. Art Spru.
Cat, Art Spru, I have no questions or comments. This is ANR.
Thank you. Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, no questions or comments.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, no questions or comments.
Bob Wirtschaft.
No. Bob Wirtschaft, no questions, no comments.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, no questions.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, no question, no comments.
And this is Catherine. I have no questions or no comments. Our vote would be to endorse this approval not required. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
This is Warren Chain, I second.
Thank you. So we'll do a roll call vote to endorse the approval not required. Art Spru.
Art Spru, I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we endorse the ANR as presented. Thank you, thank you, Thad.
Thank you much.
Next item on our agenda is the release of covenant bond statement of conditions regarding 20 Chatham Bars Avenue. This is a requested bond release and certificate of compliance and 45 Chatham Bars Avenue requested bond release and certificate of compliance. As I mentioned, I shall recuse myself from these matters, and Art Spru will act as Chair for these two matters on our agenda tonight. So Arthur, please go ahead.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, let's begin with 20 Chatham Bars Avenue. Is there someone from the applicant to provide a summary of this proposal?
Yeah, so hi, this is Tom Taylor. Can you hear me? Yes, we can. Hi, how are you? Okay. So we, I waited, I waited a couple, a month or so, so I apologize. I kind of delayed and then got back in. But we had a few things that were left on the bond work that needed to be done, which was the ADA ramp and then the striping of it. And that was completed about a month ago. And that was the final one on 20. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ally. I think those were the last two things, correct?
The only other thing was the dumpster enclosure. That, that was also completed.
Yeah, that was done too. Yes, correct. Sorry about that. Thank you. Do you want to go over to 45, or do you want to vote on that first?
No, we're going to go through these one at a time. Thank you. So I'd like to go through the, through the board in a roll call fashion to see if there's any questions or comments. Start with Bob Dubus.
You, you got me there for a minute. I don't have any problem. I went over everything. It looks good. I approve.
And next, Bob Wirtschaft.
I approve.
Okay, any comments or questions, Tom Gagin?
No, I looked at the site. I approve.
Okay, thank you, Tom. And Warren Chain, any comments or questions?
This is Warren Chain. I just have one comment. It's really about the dumpster enclosure. As I went over to look at the site, it, it's totally dysfunctional. It has some doors on it that do not close. The vertical supports that hold the doors are already out of verticality. I expect the doors will be taken off instantly. There's also, there's no gravel at all inside of the enclosure. I would have thought that you would have put down the surface first and then put the proposal up, so it's going to be nothing but mud inside. Again, I would just say it's totally dysfunctional as a, as a structure, as an enclosure, for quality construction all the way around. Matter of fact, the latch is even on backwards. But.
Warren, I'm not sure we're talking about the same site.
I'm talking about across from the bowling alley.
Yeah, 20. 20, yeah, the wooden structure in the back.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Up to, what I guess, the southeast corner of the, of the, of the lot.
Okay.
All brand new. Yeah, it's been done as a result of, of the, at any rate, I was just extremely disappointed to see the quality of the construction. And they say it's basically dysfunctional, as well as the fact that there's no, there's no base inside, so it's just going to be mud. But again, I don't know that that's a requirement. There is a structure there as required. I don't know.
Yeah, so the, so the structure was done, I'm sorry, the structure was done by wallpole woodworkers. And I'll be, and if you went and, I haven't, you know, when they first put it together, I went over and inspected it and opened the gate and everything seemed to work fine. I kind of walked away from it after that because it was just, we're not using it. There's no dumpster in there. There's no open containers. There's no barrels. There's nothing because we're not occupying the space. It could have probably racked. I ain't gonna lie to you. It might have racked on the doors, but I'll be happy to call them back and have them readjust it and tweak it. There's gravel all over that parking lot.
Exactly, except where they had already built the dumpster enclosure.
Okay, I can, I can shift it over there easy enough. That's fine. That, that's no problem at all.
Well, so that's my, we've helped up the, the, the construction of something which, in my view, is totally substandard and dysfunctional. But I have no comment other than that and would not. But I have no comment other than that and would not, I'd, I'd allow that it to be released because as they say, the work's been done and it's CBI's effort to try and get the contractor to do it properly. No other comment.
Okay. Thank you, Warren. Roger Griffin, do you have any comments or questions? Roger, you might be on mute.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I couldn't see my mute button. No comments or questions?
And this is Art Spru. I don't have any other comments or questions. At this point, like to entertain a, a motion for the board. I'm not, I'm not sure how you want to do this. Warren, you had a couple of comments or questions. You, are you have any issues with granting a full release of the performance bond of the seventeen thousand seven, seven hundred dollars?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right. And then I ask for a motion to grant a full release of the performance bond in the amount of seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars.
This is Bob Worchafter. I move to grant the release.
And I have a second?
Yeah, Roger Griffin, I'll second that.
Okay. All right, at this point, like to ask and see if there's any comments or questions from the public. And Ally, if you could let me know if you see any. I don't see anything here from the public. Nobody's raised their hands.
I do not see any raised hands either.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, like to take a roll call vote. Let's begin with Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus will approve this with a little, with a little bit of reservation because hopefully when they do use that dumpster, they will make it appropriate.
Okay. Bob, Bob Worchaster?
I approve.
And Tom, Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, I approve.
Next is Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, I approve.
And Roger gif, Griffin?
Roger Griffin, I approve.
And Art Spru, I, I approve also of the release of the performance bond. Okay, next, forty-five Chatham Bars Avenue. And appreciate if the applicant can provide a, a summary of this one.
Yeah, no problem. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Tom, Tom Taylor from Chatham Bars in again. So similar to twenty, there was a couple items that were left on the forty-five Chatham Bars Ave order of conditions. One was outdoor, they wanted a lamp down near the other dumpster enclosure in the back corner of the building, which we installed. We had to stripe. We, we were using the wrong set of drawings that we had in the handicap spots and the parking spots in that parking lot were reversed, so I had to block them out and re-stripe it, but we lost the window during the winter time. So we got them done in the springtime. So that got finished. And then the gate and the fence going down Chatham Bars Ave along that parking lot got completed in the last couple of months as well.
Okay, and Ally, from your notes, it looks like your staff site is getting an echo from somebody. Your staff site visit is complete. Do you concur with that?
Yep, the only other thing that I wanted to add was there was a required rain garden there as well. And we wanted to make sure that the planting survived the winter, and it does look like they have.
Yes, they did.
Okay, with that, we can go through and ask the board members if they have any comments or questions. Begin with Bob Dubus.
Dubus, no questions, no comments.
Thank you, Bob. Next, Bob Worchaster, please? Any comments, questions?
No, Bob Worchaster has no comments or questions.
Thank you. Tom Gagin, any comments or questions?
Tom, no comments or questions.
Thank you. Warren Chain, any comments or questions?
Warren Chain, no comments, no questions.
And Roger Griffin, any comments or questions?
No, I don't have any questions or comments.
And thank you, Roger. And this is Art Spru, and I have no comments or questions either. With that, like to make a motion to grant full release of the performance bond in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll take Bob's first and a second?
Second, Roger Griffin, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll ask if there's any comments from the public. And Ally, if you see anything, let me know. I don't see any hands.
I don't see any hands currently either.
Okay, well, with that, we can actually go on to make a a vote on a motion to release the full performance bond. Begin with, with Bob Dubus.
I approve.
Thank you, Bob. And next, Bob Worchaster?
I approve.
Thank you. Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, I approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, I approve.
And this is Art Spru, and I approve. And with that, granting full release of the performance bond in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. And just for Warren, I will take care of that one enclosure. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, with the completion of those two items on the agenda, I'll turn it back over to Catherine, our chair, to continue the meeting.
Thank you, Arthur. This is Catherine. So let's go on to the next item on the agenda. And this is, we have two site plan reviews. The first one is actually a preliminary site plan review. And this is regarding twelve hundred Main Street. And this is for a proposed formula business, Honeydew Donuts. And I believe we have a presenter for that. Tony? Are you connected? Yes, thank you. Could you kindly introduce yourself? And please go ahead to present, present this to the planning board.
Sure, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tony Giannafredo. Extension, phone number eight one seven eight. If I may, if you don't mind, I'd like to actually take a few minutes just to give you an introduction about us personally and a little bit of background on Honeydew Donuts too, if I may. So for the last thirteen plus years, my wife and I, my wife Tracy and I have owned the Honeydew Donuts in both Dennisport and Hyannis. And over those years, we, we really worked hard to, to build our reputation and our brand within the community that we serve. And as a matter of fact, as you could all imagine, we, we still to this day pretty much work seven days a week. So, you know, it's, it's been, it's been, it's been a ride, so. But we've had some good success and, you know, we're looking to continue that success in other communities like Chatham. For the first ten or eleven of those years, I also worked full-time in engineering. I worked in the high-tech industry in and around the Boston area for quite a few times. I actually have a ma, excuse me, a master's degree in electrical engineering from RPI. My wife Tracy has a degree in accounting, and she was actually a freelance bookkeeper for the last ten years also. The past few years, you know, we really, we really gave, gave these businesses a hundred percent of our time and we've really been having some good success. So, you know, we like to carry that, like I mentioned, we'd like to carry that forward in a, in, in a town like Chatham. We really feel that would be good for our business and, and a good fit. You know, while we are considered a formula business, I know, quite frankly, I, I really do believe we're more of a locally owned mom and pop business. Matter of fact, even my two daughters worked in the businesses since they were nine years old. And my, my oldest daughter Jamie now works at Cape Cod Hospital. She's an emergency room nurse. And my youngest daughter Jenna is a senior in college. So, you know, through the years too, also, we've, through our businesses, we've been able to donate to many local charities, fundraisers, nonprofits.
Buddy, cut the shit, let's go.
And, you know, I just, I just wanted to put that out there for you guys, and we've been pretty active in the community too. So we do live in Brewster, and we've been there for fifteen years. So before that, I ha, I'd just like to say that before we moved to Cape Cod, we actually vacationed in Chatham for over twenty years, and we really do feel that the charm and character of Chatham would be beneficial to our business. I just wanted to, just really quick, Honeydew Donuts has been in business for over forty years. It's a privately owned company. Ninety-five percent of the, of the stores, there's a hundred and thirty total, are, are owned, are operated in Massachusetts. And they're owned by local people like ourselves and locally, and locally owned and operated. So I, I come here tonight just to put a proposal together for, to go in with a Honeydew Donuts in the twelve hundred Main Street facility, which was the former New England Pizza. It was a New England Pizza for over forty years. And our proposal was to not change the exterior at all, the, the exterior as is, and just come in and remodel the interior. So due to unforeseen circumstances, we had to withdraw the site plan that I submitted. We are, I am trying to contract the services of a new civil engineer surveyor to come out and do a, a formal site plan for us. That was the reason why we had to do a, a temporary one tonight. So I am gonna try and contract the services, but unfortunately, most of the civil engineers are eight to ten weeks out lead time. So we hope to have a formal site plan available to you for the next review in due time. So I guess I'd like to put it, put it forward to you guys. I know you sent me a list of the criteria. If you'd like, we can go down that list. Or if you have specific questions, I'm, I'm open to it.
Okay, this is Catherine. Thank you. And is it Giannafredo? Is that a correct pronunciation of your name? Yes, thank you, Mr. Giannafredo. So this is Catherine. I just want to take a look at some of the points that Ally has covered in her staff report. And just highlight a few points for the board's discussion. She has pointed out regarding the parking that the required for this use, which essentially it's, it's a change to a formula business for this use, twelve spaces are required. The parking lot provides, as, as is, provides twenty-eight spaces and one handicap space. But that because twenty-eight spaces are required, I mean, are provided, excuse me, an additional handicap space would need to be provided. So that's one issue. Another issue is the issue of entrance and exit from this, from the parking lot. Both the police chief and the fire chief have noted in their comments that exiting from the easternmost entrance, if you exit from that one, it is a very tight curve. It's difficult to see oncoming traffic, and there's a concern that that's dangerous. So there's a recommendation that either that eastern entrance is closed or that it's used as an entrance only, and that vehicular traffic exits using the westernmost area. However, Ally has pointed out, and, and I'm just summarizing a couple of points in her report, that that is on a different lot. And so an appropriate easement would need to be organized to, to have this type of traff, traffic flow. So there is some concern about safety. There's the issue of the additional handicap parking space. Let's see, we have not received drainage calculations. Let's see, we've reviewed, let me read the health department comment. I have reviewed the plans proposed for the renovation at this property to convert the space into a Honeydew Donut shop. The property is currently connected to municipal sewer and is approved for a total of ninety-six seats. And they're proposing forty seats, I believe. A plan review package including detailed floor plans, equipment schedule, equipment cut sheets and menus must be submitted to the health division for review and approval of the plan prior to construction and issuance of a food service permit. And let me just review. I'm just gonna again review. The conservation department says property is in conservation jurisdiction. The majority of the work is interior. Honing and signs on the exterior will not have an impact on the wetland. Conservation department has no issue with the project proceeding. Fire department, let's just review. I have one concern with this project. When exiting the parking lot from the eastern side, it is very difficult to see oncoming traffic. And I believe there will be more traffic with this business. A simple remedy might be to designate that as an entrance only and exit only from the west side of the parking lot. And also from the police department, as I mentioned earlier, it would be safer to move the driveway over to the west. So it is not so close to the blind curve. From the zoning coordinator, the applicant will be heard by historic business district on May fifth. And I believe HBDC has approved the signage and so on for review of the proposed roof sign, ground sign, awning and exterior cooler unit. And also the applicant will appear before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit application for the form, for a formula business establishment on June tenth. And I understand this will be a public hearing. And zoning coordinator comments, if approved, I will forward copies of the certificates of appropriateness. And that's, I think, a good summary, what the board needs to consider. I will open it up for board questions and comments to the applicant. But we should consider also if we need to do a site visit, particularly vis a vis the issues that have come up regarding the traffic safety in the parking lot. We should also consider whether we would like to have a public hearing more specifically regarding the site plan review. The zoning board of appeals, as I mentioned, will be holding a public hearing on this matter on June tenth. And what our vote would be tonight would be to accept or not to accept this preliminary site plan. Again, this is a preliminary site plan review. And what we want to offer the applicant is our comments and guidance as to how to proceed to the formal site plan review. So with that, let's go through the board and see if you have comments, questions for the applicant, Arthur Spru.
Thank you, Catherine.
Sure.
The applicant, are you considering now or in the future of ever incorporating a drive-through of this business?
Yeah, no, absolutely not. Yeah, I don't think that's appropriate.
All right, so if we put a condition in on that, that would be acceptable to you?
Yes, for sure.
Okay, I just, just checking because that, that can be a, a little trigger. When I looked at the number of seats on the drawing you had, you should just clarify this. I only counted six, thirty seats. I note, you noted that there were forty. That's, that's just for you to clarify. It doesn't affect us because the parking is still adequate no matter what.
Right, right. And I apologize because that was, um, that was a hand drawing that I made and I'm obviously having a professional engineer do a, do a more adequate drawing. We should be ready in about a week or two.
And, uh, I think, I think that's it. I already talked about the rest of the items, Catherine. Um, I was out at the site. I did not take a look at the eastern drive and on the exit and see if there was a blind spot there. Um, I certainly can go out and do that again myself before the next meeting. But if the rest of the board wants to set a time to go, that would be fine with me. Either one is fine. But, um, it's, it's something that I think I could do on my own if I had to.
Okay, great.
If I may, um, if I may, I, I'd just like to make a few comments about the, um, uh, the, the concerns there. Um, uh, by the way, I did, I did, um, um, con- try to contact the butter about the cross access agreement. And, uh, to no avail, I, I couldn't get in touch with them. Um, I did have a discussion with my current landlord and, um, he, he does not approve of the, the cross access agreement. So I, I, that's going to be a, a tough issue to resolve there. But, um, I just wanted to make a couple of additional comments. Um, and that's why I think on the second page, I gave you guys a, a bar graph there. I wanted to talk to that a little bit. As you guys know, um, we're mainly a morning business. So the peak of our customer traffic is between six AM and ten AM. So the good thing about that is twofold. One is obviously visibility is really good during the day. But more importantly, I think if you can scroll to the second slide, I think it is, Ally. Um, I actually looked up the, um, the mass DOT, keep, keep going. Yeah, the mass DOT car counts, um, for August eighth of twenty nineteen. And if you scroll down a little further to the, to the bar graph, um, you get the hourly car count. And you can see, um, I, I put there, the busiest times for us are between six AM and ten AM, which is actually the least around, least amount of traffic, both eastbound and westbound. So uh, understand the line of sight may be an issue, but at least that's the least amount of traffic flow at that time. So, um, I just wanted to present those things that maybe means the easier concerns.
Thank you. Um, this is Catherine. So let's go on, uh, to Warren Shane.
Oh, yes, this is Warren Shane. Um, just to continue on the entrance exit question, I've, I've been to the site and taken a look and um, it's quite clear what, uh, fire and police are saying, um, is largely true. I think when New England Pizza, uh, began their business there, it was a non-issue because all of the trees and shrubbery that's, uh, creating division, uh, line of sight issue certainly wasn't there. Um, but now that there is a new business going in, it's the time to take a look at that situation. I think that it's a real issue. Um, across, uh, access agreement, that's being, was suggested. Um, I don't have a preference for, uh, that as opposed to perhaps, um, exploring having a separate entrance and exit on the existing lot. Um, it's, uh, a little tricky, but I think it would be done. There's, there's plenty of frontage there to have a, an entrance and to have an exit, uh, to the west. Um, which would, uh, which would provide, uh, a bit of extra time. Uh, if in fact there's somebody speeding along at six in the morning on twenty-eighth headed west. Um, and I do think that in a formal site plan, uh, that this issue really deserves to be addressed. Um, because again, the, the visibility for traffic heading west on twenty-eighth is very limited due to the vegetation which has grown up over the last forty years. Uh, that's just a comment for the applicant. Uh, I do have a question however, and that is, um, is, do you intend that this business be open, uh, year round?
Yeah, well, yes, we'll be open year round. Um, hours of operation depends really, I, it's probably a seasonal, it's going to be seasonal like my Dennisport store. We probably anticipate five AM to maybe six PM. Um, maybe a little later in the summer. I'm not sure yet, but it would be year round, yes.
Okay, um, and I, um, just appreciate you're just making a comment or two about the competition you see. I mean, Cumberland Farms and Chatham Town Market and all Dunkin' Donuts are all within about a half a mile of, of this site. Uh, and all of them sell basically what you're proposing selling. Um, clearly you're much more aware of that than I in terms of business, but uh, how do you see yourself being able to fit in to what is already what seems to me a fairly crowded, um, um, spa- uh, restaurant space?
Yeah, no, it's a fair question. And, uh, you know, we're, you look at our two businesses now in Hyannis and Dennisport and absolutely we confront that situation all the time. You know, we're surrounded by Dunkin' Donuts and Cumberland Farms. I mean, everywhere we are. So, um, you know, but even with that, we've been able, in the last ten years, I've been able to grow my businesses over forty percent. And I think that's just because it's a couple of reasons. One, it's, it's a much more quality product. And two, it's, you know, the attention that we give to this business has really, you know, uh, really been able to set us apart from our competition, to be honest. So, um, I mean, I honestly, I even still bake four nights a week. So, you know, so I'm paying attention to it. And I think that's what really set us apart between our competition. I think there's room for it. I do. Um, they are a competitor, but we do offer different products. So I, I think that'd be a, a good reason. Yep.
Well, I, I just wanted to make that comment because I don't think anybody wants you to start a business and then, uh, have it go belly up just because, um, you know, it's overcrowded. But I don't have any other comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Warren. This is Catherine. Um, if I may, I would just like to, uh, give a voice in agreement with Warren's concern about the eastern entrance. Having used that, uh, lot for well over forty years, uh, I concur with the fire chief and the police chief that it is a very unsafe. Um, that eastern entrance is very unsafe. I would never use it as an exit from that lot and rarely as an entrance. And I believe it's not just due to the vegetation. It's really just due to the proximity of the curve. Uh, it's really not possible to see incoming traffic. So if I could encourage the board to consider that carefully, and I would encourage you, um, Mr. Gianfrido, in when you present your formal site plan, to look for a solution. Uh, if it's not a cross-access agreement, I think moving that entrance to the west is really important for safety considerations. Um, that being said, uh, comment from me, let's go on to Tom Gagin.
Hi, Tom Gagin. Tony, um, having, uh, serviced, uh, several of your competitors in my business days, I, I just have a, I just have a, a question of, uh, not comment on, on, uh, from the planning board point of view, but since you're a captive audience, um, do you, do you bake on site?
Yeah, we do actually. I bake, uh, everything on site in Hyannis and deliver it to Dennisport. But my plan is to actually have a full kitchen in Chatham and do the baking there too. I think it's important. Um, just for quality and freshness of the product.
Well, that, that's where I was going, uh, only in, uh, what I know about the industry, uh, commissaries, uh, who service multiple, uh, outlets for the same franchise. So, uh, you can guarantee a much fresher product, can't you?
Yes, for sure, for sure.
Uh, that's all I have, Catherine.
Great, thank you, Tom. And how about Bob Wertschfter? Do you have questions, comments?
Yeah, well, first of all, is it twelve hundred or is it twelve hundred and eighteen? There's a discrepancy on the page. So we need to get this addressed directly. Okay. Under the background information, it says twelve eighteen Main Street. Um, my, my, uh, point of view here is that you really have too much concrete and too many parking spaces for, for this use. And I would either, I would love to see you, uh, take some of that pavement out and put in, uh, and put in some kind of planting. Uh, I think you could do that. You could, I'd hate to take that little tree down, but if you move the, the, uh, entrance to there, if you can't, I, I mean, ideally if you could get the cross, uh, use, uh, shared use inter- entrance and exit would be the best solution. But if you can't, moving the tree there, taking out and, and making some more vegetation in that hole that where the old one was. Uh, I, you still have enough parking spaces, uh, to, to accommodate, you know, this, this business. Uh, so I encourage you to be a little creative in, in how you, how you make this both, uh, safe and, and a little bit more aesthetically pleasing.
Sure, makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Um, and again, a comment from Catherine. I like those ideas. It could make it a lot more aesthetically pleasing and certainly improve the safety to make some changes, uh, in the lit- some fundamental changes in the layout of the entrance and the parking lot and add some green space in front. That would be really a nice thing to do. So I would agree with Mr. Wertschfter. Um, so next, let's go to Bob Dubis.
Bob Dubis here. I can see moving the entrance, uh, to the west. Uh, it's always been a problem. It's been there for so long that, that I don't know of any, uh, formidable, uh, issues with going in and out of that the way it is though. It's been there a long time. Um, the liability of going on the other parking lot could be a little detrimental to both parties. I would leave all the parking places there because I got a feeling in the summer, spring and fall, that there's going to be a traffic flowing and out of there because there's only one way in and one way out. So I think you're going to need all the spaces. I would like to, and I didn't see it on here, see another handicap parking area. And I have a quick comment for Ally. Ally, can I ask you a question?
Sure, Bob. What's up?
Uh, we purview to handicap bathrooms.
Um, the building commissioner will accro- will accro- will require that when they go in for, um, a potential building permit. But I'll just double check and make sure that a building permit would be required for this, but that's usually when, um, it's required.
All right, because, uh, and the only reason I'm coming to you is I know the bathroom situation is not, uh, handicapped. It never was.
Yeah.
So, so the other than that, I, I wish you well. I think you should do good there. It's, it's, it would be nice if there was another way out of the, um,
Okay.
One way in and one way out, but there isn't. It's landlocked in that one little spot. So you could move the entire entrance to the west a little bit. And you could put another, you could put a bigger island in there if you wanted for it's more green, but it's, it, uh, you don't see the greenery. There is greenery on the property. You just don't see it, uh, because it's overgrown. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Bob. And I, I just wanted to comment that, um, you're absolutely correct. We are, you, you know, my interior plans aren't done yet, but we're putting in two ADA compliant bathrooms in there on the inside.
Great. Okay, this is Catherine. Uh, good to hear that. Uh, let's go to Roger. Do you have questions, comments for Tony?
No, well, you know, Tony, I think it's just the same thing as, I think it's the parking. I think that's kind of concerning. I think it'd be nice if they could probably have some sort of conversation with the neighbors because I mean, we, you know, hopefully maybe it'd be not too long down the road, maybe there'll be another business coming there and maybe you might have to readdress it again. So it'd be nice to find out what their point of view was or what they're looking at. Um, I think, I, in on the site plan, I guess I'd just be kind of concerned to see a little bit more, um, is it that there was comments made, you wouldn't be doing that much outside. And I think the, I think the outside, I think it's, uh, it's looking a little tired. I would like to see maybe what you said awnings or, you know, dressing the building up a little bit because it is Chatham. It's a destination. I think the better it looks, I think the uh, better it makes Chatham feel. And the same thing for your business. You also, I get one other comment. I saw the, on the menu, um, uh, how you have like build a sandwich program. You're going to have that lunch, that same program in your, your units?
Build your own sandwich, yeah.
Yeah, same thing, yeah.
Right, so you could be pretty busy, you know, you know, with contractors and everything else in the site. I mean, all year, I mean, with Cumberland Farms is always crowded, uh, West Vin Grill. So I, I don't know the traffic is going to end at noon time. I think you could be busy pretty up till two o'clock in the afternoon. So I think the part, the parking issue is, uh, is more important. But I'd like to see more how the premises and look is, was up and looking at the property of the day, looking face on, uh, where the New England Pizza sign was. Now there's a blank, uh, sort of a blank dormer there and you know, I just can't help but look. It's like, wow, what are you, what are we really doing with that building? Because it's, it's, it's pretty tired looking. And so was in the parking lot. I'd like to see maybe a little bit more, uh, I guess maybe say maybe more of the Chatham feel. I'd like to see it probably, you know, shining a little bit more outside.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point. Thank you. And, um, you know, we're definitely planning on, obviously, uh, we already got approval from a store, but, um, I'll try to show it on the camera. We, we were planning on, you know, obviously a new sign, new awnings. Um, we, we actually agreed, I'll try to show it on the camera. We actually agreed to, um, we actually agreed to, um, you know, uh, go with the maroon color instead of our bright red, which is normal. Uh, so, you know, new sign, new awnings, uh, you know, a lot, obviously going to be doing a lot of landscaping there just to beautify it. Uh, seal coat, re-striping, you know, all the usual things that we want to do anyways, just to make it look nicer. I actually got the brick.
So we, so we did miss, you are going to, so it's going to be, you're going to reseal coat and probably repaint the spaces and all those things?
Yeah.
Oh, make amazing.
I do that at both my stores every two years now anyways. It's just standard practice. And, um, but I, you know, I, I actually like the, the charm and the character of the brick building. I mean, we actually went to New England Pizza many times. We were, we were vacationed here. So, but, uh, I didn't really want to change that, to be honest, but I understand your point. Yeah.
Worth saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I think, I think it, I think it needs to be, I think it needs to change, you know, it needs to be kind of brought up to date. I think.
Okay, okay.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Great, thank you, Roger. Um, so before, I, I think at this point, maybe I'll see if there's anyone from the public who would like to make comments, uh, before the board goes to formal vote and considers whether we need a site visit and et cetera. Is there anyone from the public who would? I do see one hand raised. I do not know how to identify you. Please go ahead.
Gloria Freeman's on the phone.
Yes, please go ahead, Gloria.
Uh, thank you, chairperson, helper. Um, I'm Gloria Freeman. Um, and Norm Paikin and I wrote the Formula Business Establishment Amendment to the Protective Zoning Bylaw, which was approved at a special town meeting in September two thousand nine by a vote of two hundred forty-nine to eighty-nine or a seventy-four percent majority. I'd like to give you a little background on the Formula Business Bylaw Amendment, um, especially because there's been no inquiries uh, about this amendment from planning board members. Uh, actually, it was the planning board which sent to the selectmen the first proposed bylaw to prohibit, with few exceptions, new formula businesses from operating within the downtown business area. The select board failed to approve the proposal because they believed the town was adequately protected against the proliferation of formula businesses which could change and detract from Chatham's special and historical community character. But within a few months, the town learned that a formula business, Dunkin' Donuts, was being established in a historic building in West Chatham at a very busy intersection without being required to go through a site plan review and/or applying for a special permit. And at about the same time, we learned that our only grocery store, Chatham Village Market, would be replaced by a CVS store, a formula business, when the lease expired in twenty eleven. And there were rumors of a Walgreens as well at another location. As a result, citizens mounted a general petition campaign in support of the market. And Norm and I co-sponsored a petition article which would amend the zoning bylaw by regulating formula businesses through the special permit and site plan review process. through the special permit and site plan review process. There are several such bylaws on the Cape across the state and throughout the country, regulating formula businesses in a variety of different ways. Some through a complete prohibition, others through a special permit, and others by limiting formula businesses to certain dimensions or capping the number in the town. The Attorney General approved the amendment after it was overwhelmingly approved at town meeting, and determined it to be a reasonable and proper exercise of the town's authority to regulate formula businesses. This application from Honeydew is now in your hands and the ZBA's to regulate and to help protect Chatham from the intrusions of chain stores and franchises, which are, of course, formula businesses, and the potential negative impact they could have on the town's special character, on the local business-based economy, on economic vitality, and on the historical relevance and experience. Because the issue of formula businesses was so important to townspeople, I hope you will hold a public hearing when you receive the formal application for this establishment, and that you will determine if it is in Chatham's best interest. I really do appreciate your letting me provide this background, which I believe to be important to your deliberations. And quite honestly, I'm not sure that you understand your role in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. This is Catherine. I'll just make a couple comments. If the board so chooses to have a public hearing, as Gloria mentioned, that would be at the time that the formal site plan is submitted. And as we understand it from both the applicant from the applicant's comments, that that may be somewhere between four to eight weeks, something. So it's a bit in the future that we would, if we choose to schedule a public hearing, it would be a bit in the future. And secondly, I just wanted to mention that the Zoning Board of Appeals has scheduled a public hearing on this matter for June 10. So we would be doing a public hearing in addition to Zoning Board of Appeals' public hearing. And I wonder, Ally, if you might make, could you make some comments, first of all, vis a vis, you know, having two public hearings, might there be some difference in focus for the Planning Board's public hearing versus the Zoning Board of Appeals' public hearing? And also, if you so let's do that first, and then I'll ask the second question.
If the Planning Board did want to have a public hearing, we would just schedule, you know, the public hearing, we have to notice it in advance and notify butters, which we would do. But your scope would still be the same scope as the site plan review criteria, because that's what's, you know, required. Again, you know, as Catherine, as you see it at the beginning, it is a formula business. So we do have that definition section in our bylaw, which the board has. But yeah, we would, you know, follow our normal site plan review criteria.
Thank you. And Ally, I just want to clarify, too. I really appreciate Ms. Freeman's comments and about, you know, the we do create zoning bylaws in Chatham to preserve the character of the town, to preserve the aesthetic character and the historic nature of the town. But regarding the formula business zoning bylaw that exists in Chatham, as I understand it, it does not allow us to deny the implementation of a formula business in the town of Chatham. Is that correct? Or could you clarify that for us?
So in the use table under formula business, it does require it to go for both a site plan review, which we're doing, you know, currently, and then also a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. For site plan review, just like any other site plan review, under state law, we're not allowed to deny site plans. We can condition site plans. We can condition, you know, as we normally do site plans for all of our concerns and things like that. But under state law, we're technically not allowed to deny site plans. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I think it does. So what I want to put before the board, and maybe let's just go through and get everybody's comments. Do we feel we'd like to do a site visit? I mean, particularly with regards to the issue regarding the safety of the ingress and egress of the parking area for this for this property. So and I know a lot of you have visited the site individually. And as I mentioned, I've visited it for 40 years. But would we like to do a formal site visit? And secondly, would we like to require a public hearing? So if I could just get the board's comments on that. Art Spru.
Thank you, Catherine. This is Art Spru. Issue to site visit. Well, I think I need to go out there again. If the board wants to go as a group, that's fine. I will go along with whatever date that they define. Otherwise, I'll go out myself. I think the safety issue associated with the egress is going to be an important one. Also, I didn't mention in my original comments that all the runoff goes offsite to the adjacent property. That really would be something that would need to be looked at by your civil engineer when you make your application. As far as the public hearing, I'm not sure that it's going to be necessary to duplicate what the ZBA is doing from a public hearing standpoint. Our issues are site related. And if we resolve the issues associated with the egress, I know that it's necessary to have a public hearing. But again, I'll go go along with what the majority of the board prefers.
Okay. Thank you, Arthur. Warren Chain, site visit and public hearing, your comments.
This is Warren. I do not feel that a group site visit is necessary. Many of the board have already been there, looked specifically at the key issue. Certainly, that's my case. I don't I don't think it's necessary. Of course, I'll go along if others wish to have a joint site visit. With respect to a public hearing, I don't think it's at all necessary or even appropriate in light of Ally's comments about our lack of ability to reject the business, which is really going to be the subject, other than perhaps the entrance and exit question. And given that there was already a public hearing that is scheduled by ZBA, I just don't see the need to have a second meeting, which which cannot address the key issue of. So I say, I would say no to both those issues. No site visit collectively, and no need for a special or for a public hearing.
Thank you, Warren. Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, I have no issue with site visit being necessary. The only covenant that I would put on that is I think that the applicant has heard the concerns of the board about egress and access from that lot. I believe that the applicant is going to have an engineered plan that will come back before the board. And if that plan is significantly different in terms of egress and and access, perhaps as individual members of the board would take a look at that with the either his engineer or the applicant for the improvements that we're suggesting. So I'd like to be somewhat ambivalent about that. I don't feel a need for it at this point in time. But certainly, we'd like to review a plan if it's changed and altered to the concerns of the board. As far as a second public meeting, I think that's at best redundant and not necessary. I think there's enough safeguards in place through the ZBA action and this applicant to satisfy those needs for the public to be able to speak to this this application.
Thank you, Mr. Gagin. Bob Wirtschaft.
Well, Tom, Tom has pretty much said exactly what I was going to say. I think the the need for a site visit is really dependent on on what plan we see we get and how detailed it is. And if, you know, how significant the change in the in the access and everything is. And I don't see a need for a second public meeting.
Thank you, Bob. Bob Dubus. Bob Dubus, are you muted?
Yeah, I was muted. Sorry. I don't see a need to have a site plan visit. If if they were to stake out a different entrance on there, we could all stop on our own board when we get the new new set of plans. And they're going to have a public hearing. We don't need two of them. I think one will be sufficient.
Okay. Thank you, Bob Dubus. And Roger Griffin.
No, I pretty much agree with everybody. I really don't think a site visit is necessary in a public hearing. I don't think we need another one. I think everything should be as long as we as long as everything's covered that we've all talked about in the the site plan, I think we should be good. The no doubt, the 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 access, the entrance and the exit is is going to be the, you know, that's the that's the that's the largest point we have to deal with.
Okay, great. Thank you, Roger. This is Catherine. Before we go to vote, and what our vote would be tonight would be to accept the preliminary site plan. But I just wanted to review a couple of things, I hope, for the benefit of the applicant, the points that have come up in terms of guiding your process from here on in. I think, obviously, from the fire chiefs, the police, the police chief, and most, if not all, board members, there is a concern about the safety of the ingress and egress to your parking lot. And what I'm seeing is that either a cross access agreement is needed, or a redesign of the site plan that moves your entrance and exit to the west. And maybe that means re, what's the word, relocating your parking area and to allow for that entrance that's moved to the west. So there is some safety concern about that, even though it's been in place for a long time. It's also been a safety issue for a long time. And now would be a good time to correct that. So that's what I'm hearing from the board. Also, regarding the whole issue of formula business, I think you've gotten your approval of HBDC. I think what the concern is, is in Chatham is, obviously, there are formula businesses located in Chatham. We actually do not have the ability to say no. But we do have the ability in in terms of, as Ally mentioned, to condition the approval of the site plan. So I would just urge you to take that into account, that whatever you do with this site, that you seek to maintain aesthetically the character of Chatham. We very much value the beauty of our historic structures. And if you can, in every way, what how you handle this building, and I think you do have that intention, to try to maintain that as much as possible. If I could point out another situation in Chatham that I was involved in on the Planning Board, which is Cumberland Farms, which is also a formula business. But through a process of cooperation with the Planning Board's requests and with the requests of HBDC, there was some significant redesign in the site plan and the building exterior and signage and so on, that they did come up, I think, with the with the plan and a building that really more reflects the type of aesthetics that we want to see in Chatham, even though it is a formula business. I think they took a lot of the suggestions and made it work. So I would just urge you to do the same. And I think you have that intention. I'm also hearing from the board in general that we don't feel that we need to to require a site visit as as a group, and that also that we do not need to require a second public hearing, since you will be having a public hearing with the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I hope, to some extent, that summarizes what I've heard from the board and can help you with going forward. And I, with that being said, I think, again, what our vote is, would be to accept or not to accept. But I will propose that we vote to accept this preliminary site plan. And could I have a motion to that effect?
Tom Gagin, so moved.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Warren Chain, I second.
Thank you. So let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also vote to to approve to accept the preliminary site plan. Please take into account the comments the boards have the board has made tonight. And when you're ready, you'll schedule your time for the review of your formal site plan. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is also a site plan review for 14 Chatham Bars Avenue. And this is regarding a proposed change of use from restaurant to retail use. And I believe, do we have Mr. Chang presenting?
Thad Eldridge is here.
Thad. All right, you're presenting this. So please go ahead, Thad.
Thank you much. Our application was a little wordy.
Thank God you have the face for television.
Go ahead, Thad.
Thank you.
Yes.
So our application was a little wordy.
He must be in a hurry. He's hungry. He's hangry.
Um, I'm there's someone speaking, and I'm not sure who you are. But if you would kindly mute your microphone, Thad Eldridge is has the floor at the moment. Everyone else, kindly mute your microphones. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the application was slightly wordy, as the history on the property is long and complex. Number of applications have been made, number of changes have occurred over the years. And it was an attempt to get some of that information into the record. What this comes down to is we have a 41-seat restaurant that's being proposed to be converted into retail space. It requires fewer parking spaces. It requires less sewer flow. We do not know what's going in there immediately, but that'll be a matter for the HBDC. Forty-one seats for a restaurant is a little difficult to make an effective or a profitable restaurant. And so they're going to try out retail. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Let's why don't we just start going through the board to see if there's questions or comments. Art Spru.
This is Art Spru. Thad, a couple of questions, just for clarification. I think you're showing on the rear of the property, six parking spaces. Is that correct? Those are on the site itself?
Yes. And then behind, there are another six.
There's an oh, there's a second six. Oh, I see. Okay, I missed that. All right. So then, Mike, just as a clarification, that parking is not just for this one proposed retail reuse. It it supports all the other establishments that are part of this group. Is that correct?
Yes, that and public parking.
Okay. So public parking is allowed here? Okay, okay. So public parking is allowed here in that? It, it, because this is actually private property, isn't it? It's not public?
No, no, I'm sorry, but for all of the uses in the building, the number of parking spaces required are covered by the spaces that we have on-site and public parking across the street, uh, right in front of, of the property. I mean, there's certainly a deficiency in the number of parking spaces on-site, uh, compared to the, the uses that generate the need.
Okay, all right. Then my only, uh, point, when I went out there to take a look at it, it was very difficult to identify and where these spaces are. I think they have to be clearly marked and identified so that the pu- the public who is going to be using them will know where our space is. Um, I think there's some shelves that are out there, but there's some ways to go about doing that with bumper blocks and that, that would designate the, each of the individual spaces. I think that has to be clearly designated out there so that people know that these are actually parking spaces for this establishment. That's all I have, Catherine.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. Uh, Warren Chain.
This is, uh, Warren. Um, when I was on-site to take a look at it, I, um, had the opportunity to speak, uh, with the applicant. And as a result of that conversation, um, it appears that he has single-handedly been the one to be renovating the entire building. This has been ongoing for a matter of years at this point. He's had some health issues, he's had, so he's been unable to continue the, the work. Um, but with respect to site plan, um, I don't think any of the parking spaces that are on the plan that we've received are available to park because they are full of construction equipment, um, relate, well, construction equipment and/or materials that are related to the renovation of the building. So I would suggest that, uh, prior to giving formal site plan approval, that we condition it upon there being, um, clearly available parking spaces and that the entire area where the parking is be cleared of, uh, all of the equipment and materials which are being stored there. It's really a shame that that beautiful building, uh, still is in significant need of, um, re- refurbishment. Um, I give the owner great credit for having his heart in the right place, but I do think that, at least with respect to the parking areas, that they should be, uh, clear and available to parking. So other than that, I don't have any comment.
Thank you, Warren. Uh, Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, no comments.
Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter has no comment.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, yeah. Listen, the last time they came before us for a change, we asked them about the parking spaces and to clean up the mess. He said, "I'll have it done by the end of the year." I think that was three years ago. So I, I'm a, I'm a person that says they should clean the parking up in those spaces at least that much. They can have the rest of the building and do what they want, but at least we should have those six places. I'm, I'm all for changing it to a retail, uh, uh, area. It's, if, if, if a restaurant or luncheonette can't make it, then I don't mind changing it to a retail store. I hope that they get a good tenant, and he does well there. But I would like to see as, uh, uh, the space is cleaned up also. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And Roger Griffin.
Um, yeah, I think I agree with, uh, with Warren. I think it's, uh, the parking, the parking lots in disarray. I mean, I've been in Chatham a lot. It has been like, you know, it's very, it needs, you know, it definitely needs a housekeeping issue. It really has to be cleaned up. I really, yeah, that's the first step to make a big difference because you really, even when I look at the day twice, and they, they've gone by a couple of times since, and it's, wow, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's in definitely disarray. I think it needs some attention.
Great. Um, thank you, Roger. This is Catherine. And in agreement with Bob Dubus, I remember, uh, when this came up before and the board required that, that, um, parking lot be cleaned up, and we were guaranteed that it would be done, and it was at least three years ago, and nothing's been done. And here it comes before us again, and it's still in the same condition. And it does mean that the parking spaces that are required for the existing business or the change of use are not available. So, um, I'm gonna ask, uh, Ally some questions. We could have this as a condition, which is what we did several years ago, and it was supposed to be done, and it wasn't done. Uh, and we could also, Ally mentions in her staff report, we could also a- ask for a cost estimate and a performance bond be submitted to ensure that the parking area to the rear of the building is restored and, uh, cleaned up and that all site improvements are done. But I want to ask Ally if we could take another course of action and that we continue this matter, uh, until such time that that cleanup is done, and then consider it, uh, consider the formal site plan when those parking spaces are actually available. Uh, so I'm just wondering if that is a course of action that we could take, uh, properly. Uh, Ally, could you comment on that?
So that, that's not usually, obviously, um, how we handle site plans. We usually, you know, require them through a performance bond to make sure that all the improvements are done. I'm not sure how the applicant would feel about that. It might take a while for them to re, um, you know, to remove all of the things in the back and then to maybe re-stripe or put down, um, markings, things like that for the parking spaces. Um, we do have a new system in town. It's called OpenGov. And I put now our conditions right into OpenGov. And before I can sign off, um, the applicant has to meet all of the conditions. So I'm not sure if that helps the board feel more comfortable about conditioning it. Um, but my recommendation would be to either condition it or to require a performance bond unless the applicant is willing to make those changes to the site now.
Okay, so, but we could condition it and require a performance bond to this time. It's just because I do like, remember that it was required before, and obviously it hasn't been done. So we could condition it and require a performance bond this time to ensure that it's done. So this, yeah, that's. Yes, is that Bob Dubus?
It's Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, yes, please go ahead.
What I would request of you is, will you ask the applicant for some feedback from what the board is talking about now, please?
Yes, that would be fine.
Fine, Thad Eldridge.
Yes, please address these issues.
Sure, if I may just suggest, um, we'd be very happy with no occupancy permit issued until those parking spaces are cleared out.
All right, yes.
That gives an incentive, I don't even know how to estimate how much it will cost to, uh, to remove everything that's there, especially since he will likely be doing the work himself.
All right, so in other words, uh, we could put this as a condition. Right now, we don't have a cost estimate, so it would be difficult to add a performance bond, although Bob Dubus might be able to give us a reasonable figure. So let's just go through the board. Um, I'm just gonna ask you, are you comfortable with, uh, adding the cleanup of the, of the area, of the parking area as a condition? And do you feel we need to add a performance bond? Uh, Art Spru.
Uh, Art Spru, Catherine, I, I agree with both of those to be added in as a condition. And I would, uh, support, I would support that.
Okay, great. Warren Chain.
Uh, this is Warren. I certainly, um, concur with that, although I, um, would also agree with Thad's suggestion that it be a condition for issuing a, uh, can, um, certificate of occupancies. So either way, I'm comfortable. I would also caution, uh, the board that, um, merely clearing the ground space from the, which is there, I don't think is going to be adequate for what we would like to see there for a parking sp- area. Um, it's gonna, there is some landscaping already there, which is in total disrepair. Um, a part of it is paved, some of it is really not. Uh, and so merely clearing out the clutter, I don't think is going to be satisfactory um, if we were to see a, um, a formal site plan that included nicely striped parking areas. I think landscaping, the paving, the striping, and all of that needs to be included in the site plan and therefore in the requirement for either a CO or for the conditions that we would put on approving a site plan. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Warren. Tom Gagin.
Uh, Tom Gagin, uh, I, I agree with Warren. Uh, we need to, the board needs to incentivize the applicant to assure us, uh, of a sincere, um, attitude towards what the board would like to see. Perhaps, um, I, I don't know if this is something the board can do, but ask him to, uh, withdraw the, the site plan without prejudice and do some work, uh, as required or requested by the board. And once we can visually see that there's a concerted effort uh, to conform to what we are, concerns have been for the past three years, that he then come back with a site plan, uh, that is easier for us to approve. I, I also, when in talking with, uh, uh, at least in listening to Bob Dubus, I certainly have no issue about changing from a restaurant to a retail use. But how do we incentivize the applicant to let us, to, to prove to us that he's serious about doing these things?
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Gagin. So you would be in favor of, is, I, I think as Ally suggests in her staff report, as a possible board vote, in, in a sense, we would continue the review to a date and time certain, and we would require certain additional information be presented. And that would include the proposal, um, as to how the parking lot would look after the cleanup and include landscaping, paving, and striping, and a cost estimate, uh, also so that if we feel the need to require a performance bond, we could do so. So in a sense, we would be asking for additional information.
Madam Chair, absolutely. I think you have, um, um, put together what my, my concerns and maybe concerns of the other board members. When the applicant has made these improvements, uh, I would like, um, the applicant to invite the board down to take a look at what has been done so that we can go forward and make an approval for the change of use. I think that, uh, that's a two-way street. So, um, if we could, uh, I keep repeating myself as an old man, but incentivize the process to move, uh, forward in a very timely manner. I'd be very supportive of that.
Thank you, Tom. Bob Wertschfter.
That was, I, I'm just gonna agree with what you two have just said.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Bob. And Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus is very much in favor of what Tom and you have said, Kathleen, and so I think it's a great idea.
Okay, great. And Roger Griffin?
There's nothing else left to say. I totally agree. I'm with everybody. Yep. Almost on page.
Great. So what I'm hearing, um, from the board members is, uh, we're going to take a vote to continue this review to a date and time certain. And what we're going to ask of the applicant is additional information, that you provide clear information on the renovation, uh, on the cleanup and renovation of the parking area, which will include, um, landscaping, any paving that's needed, any striping, and that you'll submit, uh, a formal site plan for review with this additional information that will show what the parking lot will look like with the cleanup and renovation, uh, and also provide a cost estimate for us, uh, should the board choose to require a performance bond. But at this point, I'm hearing from the board that we need additional information in order to review this, uh, site plan, although in principle, obviously, the port, the board has no issue with the proposed change of use. So that will be our vote, Ally, before you vote. Yes, Thad.
Thad Eldridge, just for clarification, so we have a greater use that exists in the building that could continue on through this, and we're asking for a lesser use and yet more work. Is that what I'm hearing from the board?
Um, if you wanna, this is Catherine. I'll speak for the board and invite the board members to, you know, to also comment, but in, if you could put it that way, but it is, how to put this? It is this, generally the situation with any, with all, all properties in Chatham, all commercial properties, this is the situation that when it comes before the planning board, even in a situation like that, where we're going from a less, from a more intense use to a less intense use, it is at the point when it comes before the board that whatever improvements are needed are required or requested. That's just the nature of the planning process. So, um, so yes, what you're saying is true, but yes, what we're saying is also true. If that makes sense. Yes.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, go ahead.
May, may I address Thad's comment?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thad, Thad, I, I, I think the comment from more than one board member, including myself, is, uh, perhaps an inconsistency in what has been promised and what has been delivered. So to, uh, say that there's more work to be done, uh, perhaps the work had not been done, uh, in prior time. So although I believe Catherine, the chair, has said that we have, as a board, no issue with the change of use, um, let's be consistent with what has been requested through the period of time.
And I certainly could appreciate and understand where the board is coming from. I just need to define to my client what the board means by incentivize.
Well, I think we're just saying that, that, that we need to see a site plan that shows what it's gonna look like with the improvements, you know, that are required, with the cleanup and reproof, improvements that are required, that the board, uh, would condition this. But what the board is saying is that we need more information in order to adequately review the site plan and including a cost estimate. So I'm hearing from the board that what we're gonna do is vote to continue to a time and date certain and request this additional information, uh, regarding the requirement for the cleanup and renovation of the parking area. So with that being said, um, I will, yes, is this, Roger?
Yes, I, I'm just wondering at this point, you know, Thad, uh, rather than him trying to go back and explain this, would there be some way that maybe we could put, Ally, Ally could put a letter to the, um, letter to them to let them know what, what we're saying, so that everyone's on the same page?
Yeah.
Would that help?
This is Catherine. I think that is generally done. A, a letter is sent to the applicant to explain the board's actions, uh, on the matter. But Ally, would you like to comment?
Uh, thank you, Catherine. Yes, uh, we usually do send up, send follow-up letters, um, with the board's action. I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding exactly what you, what you want going forward. Um, so you just want additional information about the parking striping and landscaping and how that's gonna look on a plan. Is that correct? And then also the, that the applicant should provide a cost estimate, uh, for the cleanup of the site and the straight, re-striping.
Any re-striping and landscaping that will be done in the parking area, yes.
Did I get the first part right, though, correct?
Yes, that we need that additional information. Yes, and the cost estimate.
Um, this is Warren. I have to. This is Warren. I have a question, please.
Yes, please go ahead.
Would it not be appropriate to include in a communication to the applicant reference to the obligations undertaken previously to essentially do what we're now asking that they do? Clearly, it was required, it was agreed to, it's just never been done. And I think that changes the flavor of this particular request from a, a new proposal to you need to do what you'd already long since agreed to do when it was last brought to the planning board. And that therefore we are now requesting the landscape plan, et cetera, cost estimate, and so on, to ensure that it does now happen.
Yes, and we're requesting that before we complete our review of the formal site plan application for change of use. So that's why we're continuing the matter till that information is available. Ally, what do you think about Warren's comment? We'd have to research the previous application.
Yes, I did look quickly at the notes from the last time this was here. I believe it was for the change of, I think it was the formula business actually in front. And Thad, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But yes, I do believe that there was a condition that talked about the parking in the rear, and they said that they would clean it up at that time.
And do you recall offhand, Ally, was it the same applicant? I understand in this, because it was a different unit in the same building, but it was the owner making that application previously?
I, I'm sorry, I don't recall if it was the owner. Thad might though.
Yeah.
I don't recall either. It may have been the applicant.
Bob Dubus, could I talk?
Yes.
It was, it was, it was the owner that made the application to redo one store three years ago. He said he needed a year or two to clean up the back edge. I think we've given him plenty of time to clean it up.
So, so let me just make a comment. So I'm just trying to determine if it was the same applicant, and it was, it was the owner who applied in both cases. So yes, in that case, I would think it would be appropriate to reference the prior requirement. Tom Gagin, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My concern goes a little further than that, and that is the history of what has taken place in terms of inactivity. I'd like to actually see some improvement before a site plan is brought to us and the things that were promised several years ago actually start to take place. And that the existing parking with its various equipment and failure of the striping and other issues, I'd like to see that take place before we actually bring this before the board again. My gosh, we're going down the same path again. I don't want to, I don't want to allow or concede the same behavior over and over again. So I'd like to see some positive activity taking place now, today, tomorrow, to, to make a sincere effort on the part of the applicant to show that, that we mean business and that he means business, so we can move forward and really clean up that area.
All right. Thank you, Tom. This is Catherine. Ally, I'd like to get your comments on that. What, if, is there a mechanism by which we can do that? If we continue this review?
I mean, we could ask the applicant if they would be willing to clean up some of the area. But as I said before, you know, normally, that's not how we process it, but I mean, we'd have to ask the applicant to see if they would be willing to do that.
Yeah. Tom, this is Catherine. I just wanted, if I could comment, I agree with the, with the spirit of your request, but I'm, as Ally's confirming, I don't know, according to procedure, whether that we can really do that.
Catherine, Tom Gagin, I do not want to have this board support anything that we shouldn't be doing. And if in Ally's best interest to protect this board, I don't want to make unreasonable requests of any applicant. But I would like to see some action, and perhaps Ally could put into this letter a very strongly worded request that some activities start on a voluntary basis. I don't think we can force the applicant to do this. And again, to repeat myself, I'm not asking the board to do something which we can't support now and in the future.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Catherine, sorry, this is Ally. One last thing I was thinking of. If the board would like to, you know, eventually, we do condition it to require that these upgrades take place in the back. We could say, you know, the, obviously, before CO is granted, they should come back to the planning board to confirm that the site improvements have been completed so that the board could see them, you know, again, and double check before a CO is given, if that makes the board feel more comfortable, you know, as we go forward with this.
Yeah. Hold on one moment. I would just like to, I would like to support that course of action that Ally just mentioned. And is it Tom who's wanting to speak again?
Yeah, one more time, and then I'll be quiet.
No, I can speak. Go ahead. Please go ahead.
The, the reason for my, going into some detail on this is we're coming into a very busy season for downtown Chatham. And my gosh, wouldn't it make a lot of sense if the applicant could show some good faith in cleaning up some parking areas that have, I know, are not, not in present, applicable? So that's my point, is that, yeah, we've been told this before, but gosh, it would really be great to see these additional parking spaces coming into the season.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Tom. So I think what I'm hearing from the board is that we, at the very least, would vote to continue this matter and that we're requesting the applicant come back to us with additional information regarding the cleanup and renovation of the parking area that is specified on the formal site plan that they present to us, and also that we get a cost estimate and that we will require that these things are done prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued and that the applicant come back to the board so that we can ensure that these are done. But these specifics, I believe, would be decided at the next meeting. The first step is to continue the review and have the applicant come back with the requested specific information regarding the cleanup and renovation of the parking area with a cost estimate. So that being done, though, we have to continue it to a date and time certain. So I would ask Ally for her comments about scheduling that.
So we do have a meeting scheduled currently for June 14th. However, I haven't emailed the board yet, but we do have to cancel that meeting because it is a rain date for town meeting. So we, just to be sure, we've been asked to cancel our planning board meeting so it doesn't interfere with town meeting business if it does continue. And so the next meeting after that is June 28th.
June 28th. So we could continue this review to June 28th? And Thad, do you think you can come back to us at that time with the specifics of the parking lot, cleanup and renovation, striping, landscaping, and a cost estimate for the cleanup and renovation of the parking lot? Okay, great. So we could continue this to June 28th meeting? So I would request a motion that we continue the review of this formal site plan application to our June 28th meeting and that we're requesting, I'll just repeat it one more time, that the applicant bring us a formal site plan that includes more details about the cleanup and renovation of the parking area, including striping, landscaping, any repaving, and a cost estimate for that work. So do I have a motion to that effect?
Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Arthur. Do I have a second? So one of you, Tom Gagin, do you want a second?
Allow someone else to second it.
You'll ask somebody else to second it. So would someone like to second that motion?
Roger Griffin, I'll second it.
All right. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
This is Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we continue this matter to our June 28th meeting. Thank you very much. And, thank you, Thad. All right. And now we need to go on to the next item on our agenda, which is a recommendation, a request for a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And this is in regards to 69 Strong Island Road, and this is regarding a proposed expansion of a driveway in the Conservancy, Conservancy District. And do I have a presenter for this matter? Mr. Messina, are you presenting?
Yes, I am.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your consideration. I, I think this is pretty, in my opinion, very straightforward in that the driveway entrance is at the beginning of a blind curve on 69 Strong. And there's been several instances. Unfortunately, there's a public beach at the end of the road and people go a little, little quick on this road. And I, I've been almost hit quite a few times. So my wife and I discussed over the last year, so how can we remedy this? And I thought that if we added a driveway that was further away from the blind curve, it would, it would provide a little more distance as people are coming around this. If you can, if you can see, as people coming around this kind of turn on Strong Island, my driveway is right at the cusp. And so if I were to move it further, well, not move it, but add additional driveway through the west, it would, it would create a little more distance between the blind curve and a person either entering or exiting.
Okay. This is Catherine. Thank you, Mr. Messina. I have a couple of questions. First of all, and there's someone who doesn't have their microphone muted, and there's a lot of rustling of paper. Thank you very much. So you're adding another driveway entrance to the west. Do you have, do you know how much square footage of driveway area that you're adding? And I understand you're using pervious material. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
And do you have an, do you have an estimate at least of the square footage that you're adding?
It's going to be 11 feet wide, and I believe it's the, I believe the added length is gonna be somewhere between 50 and 70 feet. Actually, it might be a little more. It may, it may be, it may be closer to 80 feet.
80 feet. Okay. So it's a fairly significant amount of square footage. And are, will you be removing any trees or vegetation from that area in order to do this? No. All right.
It'll only be grass and, and an existing mulch area.
All right. And may I ask, you're adding, rather than moving, and can I ask why you're doing that? Is it an issue of expense?
Partially, it's partially an expense, yes.
All right. Why you're choosing to add rather than to relocate?
Yes.
So, thank you. So let's go through the board members and see if there's any more questions for Mr. Messina. Art Spru?
This is Art Spru. I went out there and took a look at this. I think that the applicant's suggestion to move this entrance makes sense from an egress standpoint. I think if, that's assuming that they're going to hold the grades of the existing contours. The elevation increases up where this driveway, this new proposed driveway is going to meet Strong Island Road, and it would be important that, that, at that grade, you know, is, is maintained as a means to provide a better site distance. So assuming that that's the case, then I could, I support this.
Yes, sir. That is.
Okay. Thank you, Arthur. Warren Chain, any questions for Mr. Messina?
This is Warren. I, I really had that same question as well as to whether there would be any regrading fill in particular that would be required, assuming they maintain the existing grades. I don't have any, any issue or any questions.
Thank you, Warren. Tom, Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, Madam Chair, I have no questions or comments.
Thank you. Bob Wertschfter?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, the, the strict rule here is that there's really no more, you can't just put a driveway, you can't just expand your driveway in this zone. Now, I could see moving it, but, so, so my objection is, why are you keeping the existing driveway up to where the new driveway comes in there? I would like to see that taken out and put into planting because quite honestly, when you put that driveway in on the west side of your property, you're gonna have to take down some of those bushes and trees, or you're gonna have no site. You're gonna have the same site issues and, and
No.
access as before.
No, sir. Respectfully, that, that's not the case. The, the trees have all been pruned up appropriately. And if you, if you actually walk the proposed driveway or where we have it flagged off, the line of sight is, is very clear. I, I think from aerial, I apologize, I think that from the aerial, it, it gives, it, it shows a level of density from the aerial view that just doesn't exist at ground level. And so I, I wouldn't, you know, if, if, if I weren't, if I weren't providing the additional 80 feet of sight line, I wouldn't be doing this because it's, it's not an inexpensive proposal. And if I wasn't gaining a significant safety aspect, I wouldn't be doing it.
Right. And I, I, I get that, but I, I think as a, to be, to, to, to get my approval, I would want to see the portion of the, of the existing road up to where, on your drawing, the, the new road meets that. I would like to see that taken out and put into vegetation so that your, your net change in, in roadway is not as significant as what you're proposing here.
Okay.
But then if you also move it towards the west, our garage door is over. It'd be going like in a circle.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but that's, I'm sorry that you have to make a circle, but, I mean, I, I think that, you know, it's clear that we don't want to put roadway into these, into, into the conservation areas. And so some compromise needs to be made here.
Well, I, I think that the, the majority of the additional driveway is outside of the 100-foot zone. There's only a very small portion of it that falls within the 100-foot zone.
So let's take a, this is Catherine. Let's take a closer look at that. Can you show us on your plan, I mean, we have the aerial showing, but can you show us specifically, or Ally, if you can screen share, to show specifically just what portion of the added driveway is in, is in the Conservancy District, is in the zone?
Which we have already gone through their meeting also.
Right. So we've gotten approval from the Right, so we've gotten approval from the Conservation Department, but, and I apologize, I know this is, there's a lot on this page, but if you start at the kind of lower left, that dotted line is the 100-foot mark, where it kind of goes north and then back down south as you go to the east. And so the driveway, or the new proposed driveway is below all of that. The only place where it crosses the 100, or is within the 100-foot mark, is right there, right where, yes, that area. Thank you.
That area, okay.
Yeah, everything else is outside of the 100-foot mark.
That little triangle. So that's essentially, it would have been helpful for us to know exactly the square footage of that little area. That, you know, that's really what we need to consider, that you're adding.
I would say that that's less than 50 square feet.
And may, this is Catherine again. May I ask you, your existing driveway, is that pervious or impervious material? I apologize, I was not able to make a site visit.
No, no worries, no worries. It's all pervious. It's all p-stone.
All right, all right.
That's what we would plan to use on the new driveway as well.
All right. And essentially, that little triangle, maybe if it's Ally, can you show that triangle again? That's essentially what is being added to the Conservancy District, and that will be also pervious material.
That's correct.
Okay. Bob Wertschafter, does that address your question?
Well, I think if you took that circle and you came swinging around, I can't do it, but if you took out the right-hand corner of that, you would probably be trading the 50 feet there to the 50 feet on the other side. You would then have no additional road, driveway in the Conservancy District. And I'm not really quite sure why you need this little leg at the bottom, if it's dangerous to use it.
Only on exit.
Well, I mean, it seems to me, it's a minor difference whether you come around, you're going to be making a circle into the thing. I really would rather.
Well, part of it, part of it, sir, is there's nowhere, there's no place to turn around. So in doing that, I'm constantly backing out. So one of the big issues that we have is when we pull in and head towards the garage area, I have to back back out of the driveway. It's dangerous pulling out, it's even more dangerous backing out. And so what, by leaving the existing driveway in, it gives me the ability to be able to turn the cars around, because there's no space in the back to be able to do that. And so that would allow me to do that.
Oh, I see. This is Catherine, I see what you're saying. So you would back out, and then you'd use the existing driveway for your back, for your turnaround, and then you would exit using the more western exit.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm not, I mean, you couldn't back up and go north into that portion of the driveway and then drive out?
Not when there's another car.
Again, if we were in a situation where we only had one vehicle, it makes it a lot. If there was only one vehicle, yes, absolutely, I would agree with that, but that's never the case.
So, this is Catherine. Mr. Messina, would there be, can you look at your site plan and see, would there be a portion of the existing driveway that you could remove and still allow yourself that ability to back out and use the more western new driveway for both your entrance and exit?
I don't see how I would be able to do that. I mean, I'll take suggestions, but I don't see.
What about?
Do that.
And then we just, what about just the portion on the more eastern driveway that goes from Strong Island Road up to the edge of the circle? You have sort of, almost like a circle of planting area, so it would go north up to the edge of that circle. Could that be removed? And you'd still have a turnaround zone? And?
No, I think what they're suggesting is, I apologize, I'm trying to follow, but are you suggesting taking out the existing driveway where it meets Strong Island Road?
I think that's, Bob, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I was, because, I mean, part of me says, when you put this in, people are just going to use that circle that you've created as a parking area. So your whole idea that you were going to exit to the west isn't going to work, because you're going to, people are going to put their cars there, and you're still going to be coming down and going out in your existing driveway. So.
No, when you say people, I'm not sure who you're referring to. It's my wife and I, my children. So I think we, I think we understand the safety issues with how it currently is, and we understand our, you know, capabilities of jockeying the cars around constantly. And no, there would not be any parking on that. I don't, that's kind of unsightly, and I wouldn't want to see that.
Any more comments, Bob, or should I?
No, no.
Okay. All right, thank you. Bob Dubas, comments, questions?
I could see the viability of the driveway being moved, but I can also see the viability of taking the short piece out where it's dangerous, because one, a lot of people, once they see that, they're going to use that as a turnaround. And two, he's adding a lot of driveway in there. And I was wondering what the elevation, what the height elevation in that area was.
Mr. Messina, do you have that information?
The height in which area, sir? In the proposal for the new?
In the proposal.
Well, it's 11, yeah.
I, yeah, I mean, based on the survey, it looks like it's 11 feet.
Okay, I didn't have a plan, and it's very small on my screen. But I can, I can go with the taking out of some of the old driveway for the new driveway to stop creating a turning radius, people to go in there and turn around.
All right. Great, thank you, Bob Dubas. Roger Griffin? Roger, you might be muted.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, I guess it'd be nice if we could probably find some way, we could probably, you know, trim that area a little bit, but I'm not, you know, I'm having a hard time actually focusing to really get a good look, to really make a concrete suggestion as to how much. I can't see, I really can't see it that well.
You know, when the, I apologize, may I speak, or did you want to?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Messina.
You know, when the folks from Conservation were here, everyone that stopped by was thankful that they came by, because they said, boy, this is, this is not good the way it is, and we certainly appreciate, you know, why you're doing what you're doing. If, it sounds as if the amount of driveway is in question. I mean, can I, if I were to, you know, if we were to move forward, do you want me to remedy square, 50 square feet somewhere else? Would that, would that be a compromise, or would that be helpful in some way? Or, because we just got done literally today planting nine, what are they?
Red cedars.
Nine red cedars on the property, which I thought were native and so on and so forth, that, you know, we didn't need to do or anything like that. We were just trying to make things look better. And someone had said, you might want to wait to see if somebody asks you to mitigate in some way.
All right. Mr. Messina, thank, this is Catherine. I do see there are two hands raised. I'd just like to make a comment. I think what I'm hearing from some of the board members is that what I believe we would propose to give a positive recommendation regarding this project to the Zoning Board of Appeals, is that you would remove a portion of the existing driveway that is south of where your proposed driveway meets the existing driveway. So you'd take out that portion that enters onto Strong Island Road and is south of where your proposed new driveway meets the existing driveway. So you would eliminate that second entrance onto Strong Island Road, and you would eliminate some of the existing driveway. It is a specific concern of the planning board, when we review these, that there's, that we don't add too much driveway into the Conservancy District. It would be the case that you are still adding driveway area to the area that does fall in the district, but it does eliminate some, you know, some of the existing driveway. That's what I'm hearing. I think Ally had her hand raised, and I also see Arthur has a hand raised. So Ally, did you want to comment?
I just wanted to comment to just remind the board that it is a referral to the Zoning Board of Appeals, just to put that in perspective. And also, I think some of the board members, and I'm sorry, I wish I had a better, the better plan on my desktop, but I don't, but the plan is on the last page of the packet that was sent out to the board. It is small, but it is there.
Totally not.
Thank you. Thank you. And Art Spru, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, I think if you're trying to do a swap in the Conservancy District, that's going to be a little bit more challenging. Removing that driveway, that existing stone driveway that's further to the east, is outside the Conservancy District. So, yeah, we are providing, you're asking the applicant to provide some mitigation, but it's essentially outside the Conservancy District. Another suggestion would be, there is a very wide apron where it meets the existing stone driveway with wide curve radiuses, and the width is rather large, too. It's 12 feet. We could ask the applicant to make modifications and adjustments to that, so that the area within the Conservancy District was reduced.
Yeah.
That would be another way of perhaps providing mitigation within the Conservancy District. So, that's my only thought, that, because the applicant was asking for some suggestions, and that's my only one that I could think of.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. This is Catherine, and I just want to integrate that with what Ally is reminding us, that this is a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we could, our action could be to send a positive recommendation, but also with the recommendation that the, that part of the existing driveway be removed, and that the amount of additional driveway that's added to the Conservancy District be reduced. We could say something like that, along with our standard condition, that it is of pervious material and allows for the unobstructed flow of water. So that's something I'll suggest to the board. I'll suggest it to see if Ally has any comments about adding that. And again, it's a suggestion from the planning board in our recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Ally, would that be something that we could do properly?
Yep, I think that that's proper. Thank you.
Okay. And the wording that I used, I think, properly expresses what I'm hearing from the board. So with that being said, actually, I would ask, if the board so chooses, could we have a motion to make a positive recommendation with those two conditions? One, that the driveway is of pervious material, allows for the unobstructed flow of water, and two, that there is some redesign to reduce the amount of additional driveway within the Conservancy District. And that would be, again, our recommendation. Warren?
Yes. The plant was so small that I actually misunderstood at the beginning that the existing driveway was to remain. I thought that the plan was only to put in the new driveway. And especially given the reason the applicant is proposing the driveway is a safety issue, it does seem that we ought to mention in our recommendation to the zoning board that we concur with the applicant's concern over the safety of that existing egress from the site. And that is part of the reason we would suggest that it be closed off, so that, but at the same time, retaining all the ability to have a turnaround, because I think that's a safety issue as well. That's what I'm hearing from the board, and I believe I concur with that, based on the fact that that's the reason the applicant is proposing any changes.
All right, so we're, so, so we want to add, so we want to say that as well, that we want to actually remove the existing driveway and the access to Strong Island Road, and do some redesign and reduce, in addition, reduce the amount of additional driveway that's placed in to the Conservancy District.
I don't necessarily mean remove the existing driveway, but merely close off the entrance to that driveway, retain much of it as we feel appropriate. I think the way you've described it is, you know, trading the part in the Conservancy District with the amount of driveway you take out accomplishes that objective and retains plenty of space for a turnaround. The safety issue, I think, is only that you close off the existing driveway, even if you took off nothing other than essentially closing it off, so that you could not use it as a turnaround, where the safety issue really comes into play.
All right. Let's go through the board, and I just want to get a sense of the board before we take a vote on this recommendation. I'm going to suggest, and I'm wondering, Mr. and Mrs. Messina, could you mute your phone or microphone?
Can we turn on something? If we.
Guess not. No, go ahead, Ben.
If we closed off the existing, unfortunately, there's no way to turn. If you want us to close it, and say we put grass there, again, there's no way for us to turn. So we're always backing out onto Strong Island.
Yeah, which, which, yeah, that just doesn't work. I appreciate that we are converting grass and mulch to, you know, a pervious material. And I certainly appreciate the fact that we're adding driveway, you know, probably 80% of what we're adding is outside of the 100-foot buffer, and a small section is within the 100-foot buffer. I think one of the suggestions by one of the board members was, you know, it's a 12-foot wide driveway, you know, we can reduce it to 11 feet. We can, and I think the suggestion was also that one of the aprons looks wide. We can certainly cut that down to minimize the impact that is within the 100-foot. But I think that eliminating that, the existing driveway, I just don't think it works. I think when you, when you actually look at the property, I just don't think that any- I, I just don't think that, that any of that is going to work. I, I certainly appreciate everyone's concerns, but having, having lived here, you know, we, we kind of see what is, what we're capable of doing and what we're not capable of doing. And my fear of closing that off, closing off the existing area, which again, is outside of the 100-foot mark, wouldn't give us the ability to turn around anywhere on the property.
Mr. Messina, this is Catherine, and I think what the board is suggesting is a redesign that would allow you the space to turn around, but would eliminate some of the, some of the existing driveway and would eliminate that, that existing access to Strong Island Road, but would still allow you the space to turn around and, if possible, to reduce the amount of additional driveway that's added to the conservancy district. I'm looking at the plan right now, and I see that a redesign could be done to allow for that and still allow you turnaround room. So what I would like to do now, though, is to go through the board, and I need to, we need to vote, and remember, this is a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals will make the final determination on your, on, on what you're presenting, but the planning board does need, need to make a recommendation. So I'd like to go through the board and just get, before we vote, get a sense of the board specifically how you want to word our recommendation. So I'm going to suggest that we, that we do say our standard condition that it's, the addition is made of pervious material and allows for the unobstructed flow of water, but that the board also suggests redesign that would remove the existing entrance onto Strong Island Road or close it off and reduce the amount of additional driveway that's introduced into the conservancy district while still allowing room for a turnaround for safety reasons. So, Art Spru, your comments?
Yeah, I think the, the bigger item would be to reduce the amount of, of area within the conservancy district, and that reducing the width and reducing the radiuses is going to accomplish more. This, you know, I can see where, where everyone's coming associated with, even if you block off 10, 15 feet of the other entrance, you still have enough room to back in and make a turn if you, if you needed to. So if, if that's what the other board members want to recommend, that's fine with me.
All right, thank you, Arthur, and Warren Chain.
Now, this is Warren. Madam Chairman, I agree completely with what you proposed.
Thank you, Warren, and Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin agrees with what's been said so far. Arthur, yourself, I think that we're asking for them to be able to do and accomplish what they'd like to do with minimal impact by closing off the present entrance, not to a great extent, but just allowing it to be a buffered area and can't be used as, as Bob Dubus has pointed out, as a potential turnaround for someone coming down Strong Island Road and wishing, it's a very narrow road in that area, and wishing to turn around and using this driveway to, to access a turnaround. So I would approve the recommendations from the chair, certainly Arthur, and the, and the other board members to that point.
Thank you, Tom. Bob Worchhefter?
Yes, I agree with that wording.
Thank you. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I agree with what's going down here.
Okay, thank you. Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, I am going along with, obviously, with yourself and the board. I'm good.
Thank you. And this is Catherine, and I also agree with the wording. Ally, did you get that wording? Because now we'll go into a formal vote. And again, this is simply a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals that we will be sending a positive recommendation with the condition, our usual condition, that the driveway be constructed of pervious material and that it allow for the unobstructed flow of water. And additionally, that some redesign be done to remove the existing driveway access to Strong Island Road and to reduce the amount of additional driveway introduced into the conservancy district while still allowing an adequate turnaround zone for, for the occupants to exit and entrance by the new proposed driveway. So let's take a formal vote, that this is the recommendation, a positive recommendation with some stipulations that we'd send to the zoning board of appeals. May I have a motion?
Bob Worchhefter moves, makes the motion.
All right, and may I have a second to that motion?
Art Spru, a second.
Thank you. So let's do a roll, a roll called vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Worchhefter?
Bob Worchhefter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Messina. Remember, this is our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. We're essentially sending a positive recommendation with some additional suggestions to the zoning board of appeals. Thank you very much. All right, so let's move to the next item on our agenda, and that is a discussion regarding the draft of historic preservation incentive bylaw. And Frank Messina and the historical commission have been working on drafting this bylaw, working together with, I understand, with Cape Cod Commission, and also with Ally and the community development department. They've been working for some time on this. Ally does have a PowerPoint presentation that will present the main points regarding this proposed bylaw amendment. And our purpose tonight is to have a review and discussion. And I think Frank Messina, the chair of the historical commission, would like to make some opening comments. So Frank, if you'd like to go ahead?
Yeah, good evening, thank you very much. I didn't get a chance to welcome the other Messina to Chatham.
Yes.
And guess what? My wife's name is Joan also, so it's going to be interesting. Well, and again, Frank Messina, the chair of the Chatham Historical Commission, and this particular issue, preservation incentives for historic preservation or incentives to, to assist in historic preservation is an item which, which actually started with you folks in the planning board a few years ago. And it was kind of moved aside when we picked it up, working with the Cape Cod Commission, Sarah Kordjev and her staff in terms of refining it and doing a lot of meetings with the Board of Selectmen, with the zoning board of appeals, and, and yourself, Catherine. So you're, you're aware where we are. And I think we've reached a point where we're coming back to the planning board with a presentation by Ally. And of course, 95% of all this work is done by staff, and that's Ally. And we do appreciate, you know, all the work. And we're at the point, well, hopefully, we can get some positive comments from the planning board that we would like then to move on and possibly get to, back to the, to the Board of Selectmen and then possibly to counsel to actually draft something in, in a legal form. I guess then, Catherine, you know, we would potentially have some kind of a discussion with, beyond the public. I mean, we, this has been on our agenda for, for a good year and a half, so the public has had an opportunity, and I know it's been in the press a lot. So we've reached out to some of the stakeholders here, you know, attorneys and contractors who work with this preservation, with the historical commission, and we've gotten some comments, mostly positive. One other thing, just quickly, if I may, I, I wanted to make a comment when you, when you were looking at that application of 14 Chatham bars, and I really appreciate the planning board's attention to that particular property. That property is one of 21 properties in Chatham, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. So it is a very historic structure, and it's just really great that you folks are taking some action to see, you know, some of the maintenance be done on that property. Having that, turn it over to Ally and her presentation.
Thank you, Frank. So Ally, please go ahead.
Great, can everyone see my screen with the presentation up?
Yeah.
Make sure.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so as Frank said, we're here to discuss with you tonight and get comments on, on our draft historic preservation incentive bylaw, its variations of dimensional requirements. So in my presentation, I'll just go forward, oops, I'll just go forward and really discuss each aspect of the bylaw. We did provide the bylaw in its full draft form in your packet as well. But again, I'm just going to go through it step by step so everyone understands where we're at. So the purpose and applicability. So what is the reason why we're here? What is the reason why we're proposing this draft bylaw? We really want to encourage the preservation of buildings and sites that have been, you know, torn down in the past. We realize that this is a, has been an issue that is going on currently, and we really want to try to allow for some permitting flexibility in these dimensional requirements to allow for historic preservation. The zoning board of appeals is given the authority through this proposed bylaw, through the special permit process, to allow this permitting flexibility. So it would be rest with the zoning board of appeals. So applicability, who applies for, for this? And I'll talk about this in more detail as we go forward. But it's to eligible historic buildings, and I'll get into what that's defined as as we go forward. But these incentives are intended for primary structures and not to be used for accessory buildings. So we wanted to make really sure that, you know, if there was a garden shed in the back that was, you know, older than 75 years, people couldn't use this incentive for that. We really wanted to make sure it was for primary structures. So what is the definition of eligible historic building? Any building or structure that's listed on the National Register of Historic Places, either individually or designated as a contributing structure, listed on the State Register of Historic Places, or has been designated by the Chatham Historical Commission to be historically significant building or structure. It's probably very hard to see this, and if it is, I have, I can get out of my PowerPoint presentation and pull up the map, which I think I might, is that, I think that might be easier. One sec. Technical difficulties, okay. Is that easier for everyone to see? If I can scroll in?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's good.
Okay, great. So this is a map that shows different historic properties in town, and it attempts to outline where these potential, where this incentive could be potentially eligible for. And so I'm just going to scroll up here very quickly to kind of look at this key. So really, there's about a little over 1,000 sites that are inventoried as historic in Chatham. And on the map, we've identified the Old Village National Register District. You can see it's down in this section down here. The Historic Business District is in this kind of orangey color with the hash. That's the HBDC, we've just outlined that as well. There was a concern that came up through the public input process to place the conservation restriction properties on the map because they wouldn't be, you know, people wouldn't apply for this incentive. So we just wanted, if you're in a conservation restriction, so we just wanted to put that on there for everyone to see. And so this is kind of, this section of the key here is where it gets more specific for this incentive. So potential for additional building footprint. So in the red, so these are the parcels that are shaded red. The footprints exceed zoning. So the building footprints of the existing structure, they, they already exceed zoning. So we would anticipate that the, these properties probably wouldn't come forward with this incentive currently because they already have an existing avenue to go through with the special permit process to allow them to expand because they're pre-existing non-conforming. So in our mind, we, we take those out of kind of eligible for this because they do have that other avenue, even though we do, we don't limit that at all through this bylaw. If you can apply, if you're on any parcel in town, any lot in town. But we just anticipate that, you know, if I was a property owner, I would probably go in this, in another, in another avenue. Because as you'll see, as we go forward at this bylaw, we do, we are proposing a preservation restriction to be placed on the property. So I just wanted to point that out. But in these blue shades, so like the lightest blue going up to the darkest blue, we believe that the, these are some properties that could potentially use this, this incentive. So that's, let me see if I can do quick math. I probably can't, but 449, 222, and 121. We believe that those could potentially, those are the properties that could potentially use this incentive. All right, and I'm happy to take questions at the end. I'll come back to this. I'm just going to go back to my PowerPoint quickly. All right. So special permit priority. So we wanted to define the priority that the, that special permits under this historic preservation incentive shall be placed on keeping the buildings and structures in place, so on the specific lot, rather than moving them to other locations. However, we did, we do recognize, and we did recognize through this process that in the past, historic structures have been taken off lots in town and moved to, you know, different lots in town. And we wanted to make sure that you could potentially use this incentive bylaw if you were preserving your historic structure and moving it to a different lot in town. So we wanted to be able to give that option. But then we wanted to be very specifically clear that if you did use this option, you did move your historic structure to a different lot in town, a lot that you've taken your historic structure off would not be eligible for this special permit. So we really wanted to try to close those loopholes, and that's why we thought to be very specific in this section. But we did want to give the ability to be able to use the incentive if a structure was moved because we had seen that in the past happen. But again, the priority would be for historic structures staying, staying on the lot. So incentives for historic building preservation. So what are these incentives that we're proposing? So the following waivers or regulatory flexibility are available to eligible buildings' relief from dimensional standards. So building coverage is the first incentive we're proposing. So the zoning board of appeals may, by special permit, waive building coverage requirements to incentivize the reuse of historic structures. And the building coverage incentive calculation shall be as follows. The maximum byright building coverage allowed in the bylaw, and it's in this schedule of dimensional requirements, multiplied by a factor of no greater than 1.5. And if you just give me one second, I'm going to start presenting again because I have a spreadsheet that shows some examples of what that could mean. Just give me one second. Okay, here we go. All right, so as an example, an area of buildable upland, if there was a 20,000 square foot lot, currently in our bylaw, the building coverage byright is 28,000 square feet. So byright currently, you could have building coverage of 28,000. Through this incentive, if you did 125% byright or 1.25% Through this incentive, um, if you did a hundred and twenty-five percent by right or one point two-five, it would allow three thousand five hundred square feet um, of building coverage. So it's an incentive and it goes up in a range. We wanted to scale um, to go up as your lot size goes up. So as another example, twenty-five thousand square feet lot of buildable upland, right now by right, you could have two thousand nine hundred square feet. And so if you were to apply this incentive, you would be able to have three thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet of buildable upland. Um, so you're just be able to have a little bit more. And then another example, a thirty thousand square foot lot of buildable upland. Right now, your building coverage is th, allowed by right is three thousand. But if you use our incentive, you would allow uh, to have three thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. So that's an additional coverage of the seven hundred and fifty square feet that you would be allowed. And it goes up from there, as you can see. Okay, I'm gonna switch back to my PowerPoint, sorry. Okay. Sorry, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. I just wanna make sure. Okay, um, so that is the first incentive that we're proposing. The second incentive that we're proposing um, is to uh, be able to um, give relief from the building setbacks. So again, the zoning board of appeals may by special permit waive the abutter setback requirements in all zoning districts, up to one-half the minimum required setback in the zoning district, but in no case less than five feet. So we wanted to make sure that you still had, you know, that space. And again, this would be for, um, you know, lots and houses that are per, that are historic in nature and they're proposed to be preserved um, with a historic preservation incentive. And again, we really wanted to also close some loopholes and just, you know, try to make sure that we're really thoughtful about this. And so we um, eliminated here the front yard setback. Um, we just included the abutter setback. So the front yard setback can't be waived, but the abutter setback could. Okay, um, and then this is just a map that kind of, this is a, an illustration that shows um, potentially how this incentive could work. And is it difficult to see? My screen is very small, so it's hard. Um, but it is in your packet as well.
Yeah, we've got it.
Okay, good. Yeah, so basically, this top row here um, shows the building coverage that you could potentially have um, if your historic building is not preserved. So this green area shows what you could do by right, and these are just two examples of different structures um, that could be done by right. And then this bottom row here um, shows the incentive um, that would allow additional building coverage of one point two-five. Um, if the historic structure is preserved. And so basically, this white il, this white section of the building illustrates the historic structure. Um, and then this pink or red here um, represents the additional building coverage that you could use uh, through this incentive. And again, this is, just gives two different dimensions um, about, you know, showing the different additional building coverage. So again, this is the white historic structure portion, and then this would show the additional building coverage that you would be allowed. Okay, uh, so special permit process. So we wanted to really outline the process going forward so that it was very clear. Um, so prior to the initiation of a special permit procedures, the Historic Commission shall ju, make a determination of eligibility for this incentive. So we really wanted to leave this in the hands of the experts and that's in the Historical Commission to determine if it is eligible for this incentive. Is, is it actually a historic structure or is it not? And so we wanted to do that upfront and make sure that people really understood, um, you know, this, especially helping the ZBI uh, making these determinations. Is it eligible for this incentive? So we put that specifically in there. And then if the Historical Commission determines that the property is eligible, the applicant may proceed with the special permit um, procedures. So findings required. So we wanted to add just a few additional findings. This might look familiar to some of you, but number four through twelve are the existing findings that are already in our bylaw that the zoning board reveals follows when they um, approve special permits. So we just wanted to reiterate those and keep those in there. But we did add the first three um, specifically for this incentive. So the first one is that the modification and, of standards and requirements authorized or necessary to maintain the eligible historic building on site on which it was originally constructed, or to relocate to another site deemed appropriate by the special permit granting authority. Number two, that the proposed renovation, repair, adaptive reuse, or removal preserves to the maximum extent feasible the historical and architectural features of the building. And three, failure to grant the special permit is likely to result in inappropriate use or physical modifications pursuant um, of a demolition permit. So those were some of the findings that we took from some other bylaws that the Cape Cod Commission helped us uh, find. Um, and we, you know, decided to put those in there. We did, when we went to the zoning board of appeals to um, present this, they did have some concern over some of those new findings. So we probably are gonna have to um, modify those a little bit as we go forward. So I just wanted to point that out to the board. Okay, conditions to be uh, imposed. So again, if we're allowing this incentive, we want to make sure that these historic structures not continue to be historic and we don't can, you know, create more of a problem. Um, because the whole purpose of this is to preserve these historic structures from demolition. And so what, the conditions to be proposed is that we want to make sure that there is a um, a preservation restriction that's required. Um, and we wanted to also close another loophole, so we added this in here. That if there is a loss, um, a full demolition of historic structure, um, if the property was to be rebuilt, we wanted to make sure that you could not um, build back with these incentives. So basically, you would have to follow the current bylaw uh, setbacks and things like that. Um, because we really wanted to, again, close the loophole and make sure people, you know, it couldn't be abused going forward, I guess, uh, to make sure that if for some reason the property, historic property was lost, um, you'd have to go back to the same uh, standards that are required in our bylaw. And that is the end of the presentation, but I would be happy, and Frank I'm sure would be happy, to answer any questions that you had or comments.
Thank, uh, this is Catherine. Thank you Ally, um, and thank you Frank. Um, really a great presentation, very clear. And having looked at earlier versions of this proposed bylaw, I think you, everybody's worked really hard to clarify uh, everything and put in enough checks and balances to pre, uh, to prevent the inappropriate use of the bylaw. I, I just had a question, if I could ask your comment about the findings required, just this uh, last page, second to last page that you reviewed. And you mentioned that the additional three uh, that are being added, that there's some question about those. And I'm just wanting to understand what are the, what is the question uh, about those additional three?
So I really do think it really falls to number three was the, um, one of the concerns, which was the failure to grant the special permit is likely to result in inappropriate use or physical modification. Um, and so I think the concern around that was that where is the benchmark for inappropriate use?
Right, okay.
And so that was something that we wanted to clarify kind of as we go forward, um, because that was one of the concerns.
Okay, thank you.
If I may Catherine.
Yes, please go ahead Frank.
You know, in the sense, uh, the Historical Commission in reviewing, you know, hundreds of applications and changes, you know, we understand that change is necessary and, you know, uh, it's just a fact of life. And you can have change that's appropriate in terms of uh, keeping the, the historical integrity of the existing historic structure. Uh, and, and that's, that's unfortunately, uh, it's subjective, uh, you know, uh, and, but it's the, it's the Historical Commission which would help in determine whether or not that change is in fact inappropriate and would uh, uh, result in the loss of the historical integrity of the property. Is very specific in terms of uh, National Register District, uh, is the change uh, so inappropriate that the property would no longer be considered for uh, listing on the National Register? So that's, that is, and I certainly understand it is, it is subjective, but that's what we do with the Historical Commission. Thank you.
All right, and it is specific um, according to what's accepted in the register, so.
That's correct, yeah. There is criteria that's listed in the, in the chapter one fifty-eight, our bylaw, which determines whether something is or is not historically significant. Thank you.
All right, thank you Frank. That's, uh, that clarifies it. So let's go, uh, Arthur, do you have questions or comments for Frank and Ally?
Um, I guess some questions. Um, obviously, this is not something that I have a strong background in and I'm probably gonna be asking some open and maybe non-informed uh, questions, but uh, perhaps you can help me out a little bit on this. Um, I, I, I take it that if this is an existing structure, when you're trying to preserve it, um, the dimensional thing, doesn't that fall underneath a, um, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use? And so therefore, the dimensional issues associated with the setbacks and that are, 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 are not, are non-issue? So why is there this dimensional issue? Is that for an apo, proposed addition to the actual historic structure? Uh, help me out, understand how this starts to apply.
Yeah, so I think that's a good question. I think that's what a lot of people, um, kind of the question that I found a lot of people ask. So basically, if um, your lot in any way is pre-existing non-conforming, you do have that avenue to go through the zoning board of appeals special permit um, to waive, you know, dimensional requirements, just as you said. Um, but some of these lots, and that was the um, map that I showed before, they don't have that ability to go down that um, avenue because they do conform to the requirements of our bylaw, or they're under the requirements of our bylaw. So even though this incentive is eligible for every lot in Chatham that has a historic structure on it, we do feel that because we're asking or requiring a preservation incentive, the only lots that are gonna use that, the, this incentive are the ones that don't already have that existing avenue through the pre-existing non-conforming um, section of our bylaw. Does that, did that make sense?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. Um, uh, that, that somewhat clarifies it. The next question I have is, um, like you're showing in your graphic image there about that addition of a, a twenty-five percent.
Yep.
So am I understanding this right? Again, you gotta bear with me because I'm an engineer and I deal with numbers. If you've got a thirty thousand square foot upland area and that's normally allowed a three thousand square foot building, and if your historic building is two thousand square feet on that, but they want, are you allowed to add seventeen hundred and fifty square feet to that? That, that is historic building footprint? I, I'm sort of confused by that whole thing.
Yep, so that's correct. So if your historic structure is two thousand square feet and you're on a thirty thousand square foot lot, you already have under our bylaw the right to increase your coverage by a thousand square feet to three thousand square feet of building coverage. Um, what we're proposing as the incentive under this bylaw would allow you to have three thousand seven hundred and fifty. Um, so you're right, that would give you an additional seven hundred and fifty, you know, square feet above what you're already currently allowed. So yes, one thousand seven hundred and fifty additional, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and uh, another one was the definition of eligible historic buildings. Um, the three A and B are very uh, definitive. C is very subjective, and I think uh, Frank, you were talking about that. Yeah, you have clear definition of what that is. The language that you have here doesn't sound very clear to me. This is all very wishy-washy and subjective. If there is some clear language about what the definition is, then let's reference it or put it in here rather than making it, making the statement so subjective. That's just, again, my point of view. The, the A and B are very specific, but C is very subjective, in my opinion.
Well, what you're, what you're getting there is the, the current bylaw as it exists.
Okay.
Uh, associated one or more historical uh, events, uh, cultural, economic, et cetera, et cetera, and possesses architectural value. So that, that is the criteria. You know, I, I did indicate to you, you know, well, uh, you know, this is not, I'm an electrical engineer. What kind of engineer are you, Art?
I'm a civil.
Civil, okay, so there you go. So it, it is subjective, you know, historic preservation, a lot, a lot of what you do is, is subjective. Uh, there's no question about it. But I think when you have a building that was built in seventeen something and all of a sudden somebody wants to take it down, you know, the age, the age does a lot, a lot of, uh, a lot of the consideration uh, of whether or not we think something is worthwhile and be saved. But you can have a building that was built in seventeen something and it's gone, it's not there. But what we are dealing with is buildings which are historic and still maintain the architectural uh, significance and the value, and that's what we want to preserve.
Um, just, just two more items. Um, I think we just recently had a case in here where a property owner came before the town and they were looking to uh, raise the house and relocate a portion of the, of the historic building that was on the site to another location on that site. Would that dimensional uh, variance be allowed for that particular situation with no addition of a, uh, to that historic structure? Where they would just move that, have a second structure on the site? Is, you see them getting that? I'm, I'm looking for how this applies to an actual case that we actually ran into just recently on an application.
Yeah, so that's a great example. Um, so we would, I'm sure the Historical Commission, I, I'm, I think I know which example you're thinking of. So they just took a very small piece of that structure. I'm sure the Historical Commission would require that the whole structure be preserved. Um, and, and also have, you know, the historic incentive. But that's a good point, that can you move the historic structure and then add, I guess, a new house with these incentives? I would say no, but we could be very clear and put something in there as that could be a loophole. Um.
I think that's very important because that, that was an actual case and I could see that happening again and again. Um, and there was one other statement that was in the uh, bylaw that I was, I was uh, confused on, and it's actually in the last paragraph. It's the first sentence, and it talks about um, in addition, the owner shall record at the Barstow County Register of Historic Preservation Restriction Reform approved by the Special Permit Granting Authority. And then they have after it, and approved and endorsed by the Chatham Select Board. I didn't realize the Chatham Select Board would need to approve something like this. If you, um, Special Permit Granting Authority, generally, that's not the case. I don't think that's the case with our board either, that we have to have an approved and endorsement of anything that we do with the select board. Is there a reason why that was put in there?
This is, this is a, the preservation restriction which they're approv, approving, not the, not the actual. So that's the difference. Uh, what, what we did here, by the way, is that many times, preservation restrictions are done through mass historic. And we decided that's a very high bar, and it could take five years, okay? Uh, forget them to, to do it, and that's why we, we changed it. Uh, and we, and I'll let Ally explain the process that we, we chose here rather than going to. And we, and I'll let Ally explain the process that we, we chose here rather than going to mass historic.
Yeah, so we were, we've, we debated this, as Frank said, kind of back and forth, and we decided with the help of the Cape Cod Commission to just require the Select Board to be the one who would sign off on the historic preservation, and we felt that was the best because, and I think Frank just said it, but I was also writing notes at the same time, that it takes a long time to go through a mass historic, and we wanted this to be more of a easier process for applicants to go through, we wanted it to be incentive. And so that was the reason, but they, yeah, they wouldn't need to approve the special permit because obviously that's through the Zoning Board of Appeals, but they would need to approve the preservation restriction.
Okay, now it makes sense, thanks for your clarification. I, I think you're heading in the right direction, I'm, I'm learning a lot by your old process here, appreciate your work.
Thank you for your thoughtful question.
Great, thank you, Art. Warren, questions, comments?
Warren. Ally, Frank, thank you for all your work today, very much in favor of it. Ally had mentioned and has the chart which shows how many properties you feel might be suitable to apply for this added flexibility. I'm not quite sure how that squares, or that I keep hearing here, that 70% of all of the lots in Chatham are non-conforming. And certainly of the cases I can think of that I am disappointed by the outcomes are all non-conforming lots that have chosen the alternative route that you have carefully indicated is available if you have a non-conforming structure on a, and/or a non-conforming lot. That's kind of the elephant in the room, I would really hope that we could have something that would incentivize properties that are non-conforming to preserve the existing structures, but that's just an overall comment. If you're dealing with those that meet all the requirements, which is what this proposal really deals with, I do have some specifics, you know, specifically what body is gonna be responsible to ensure that the requirement to record the required historic preservation restriction? Is that the Zoning Board of Appeals, or is it the Planning Board, or is it somebody else?
Yeah, so I think that that would probably be a condition of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but and we'd have to make sure that it's, you know, obviously done as the condition, but I think that's a great point, and we could outline that in more detail, because I don't think we, yeah.
You, Ally would be doing that in your spare time, right? Okay. Yeah, and let's see. This is just to, just to confirm my understanding, is it correct that the draft bylaw would apply to accessory buildings if they qualify as eligible historic buildings in their own right?
No, so we specifically mentioned that we don't allow accessory structures to use this incentive because, like, we had the thought that, oh, maybe someone has a garden shed or something in the back that is historic, and it is historic, you know, it's over 75 years. But we wanted to make sure that we didn't allow that. You know, we didn't allow that garden shed to be used if you had a brand-new house. So, no, we specifically put that in there, I'm just trying to look at the, where that wording is.
In other words, it would be perfectly okay under this bylaw to bulldoze the historic barn, stable, whatever it might be, just bulldoze it so that you would then free up the available square footage to expand your mega mansion.
Well, if, if in fact, the, the barn is in fact historic, meets the, you know, you know, and the Historical Commission determines that is historically significant, you know, the only thing we can do is put a demolition delay. You know, this is not an historic district, and you're right. After 18 months, they could demolish the barn, and, and what we're trying to do here is when, when people come and they want to, you know, make significant changes or demolish an historic, you know, they say, gee, I'd love to do it, but can you help me, you know, what can you do, you know, and it's an incentive, it's something to start a conversation. Thank you.
All my comments here should not be taken as being in opposition, I'm very much in favor of everything it's here.
Understand, understand.
Oh, let's see. I'm not sure I understand the, the meaning of the word priority in several places, like priority in granting special permits under these historic preservation incentives shall in all cases be placed on keeping buildings and structures in place. What does granting priority mean?
So we just wanted to make it clear, and maybe we didn't make it that clear, but we just wanted to make it clear that the priority was for the historic structure to be preserved on-site on the lot that it currently exists now. But we do give the other option of if the historic structure is moved to a different site, you can use this incentive, but we just want to make it clear because I believe through the Historical Commission, this is their goal, is to keep the historic structures on-site, that's the first objective. But obviously, we, we recognize that we want to keep the historic structure, so if they can move it to a different site, we'll allow the incentive, but the priority is for, to keep the structure on-site.
I should read that as you're more likely to get this flexibility if you agree not to move the structure.
Well, let me just say, give you, give you a concrete example of something which unfortunately is going through the process. 68 L Drive, which we believe through dating pretty shortly, you know, was in fact William Nickerson's son's house. And, you know, to preserve that, there was the thought of, well, moving it to, you know, moving it to Sandwich or something, and, or moving it somewhere in town, you know, and will still be preserved. But the Historical Commission wanted to attempt to encourage the owner to preserve it in the actual setting where the Nickerson family had settled. And that's the idea of trying to, trying to leave the historical perspective you know, of, of where the location.
With, along that, did the commission consider giving greater incentives if an owner does not seek to relocate a structure?
We did not consider that.
No.
Yeah.
Is there any reason that that might be a significant incentive to somebody? Just a question, it does seem to me if you want to build something big and relocating a structure is gonna be the first thing on your list of things to do, yes, you're making it perhaps less attractive, you're giving priority if you were to keep it, but I guess I came away saying, gee, shouldn't there be an incentive over and above the flexibility if you agree not to relocate? But, just a question, hypothetical.
Something we could look into, yes.
Yeah, impractical and unreasonable are terms that are in here in paragraph four of this thing, talking about preservation measures being impractical and unreasonable are the reasons that you could be given permission, something. Be very, it's sort of like a non-conforming property where you would say it's no more deleterious to the neighborhood than what was there, whatever that means. So, anybody would seem to me to have a wide-open door to say, well, it's impractical and unreasonable for me, you know, to not relocate something. So, I'm wondering if there's any way to make greater specificity to what that really means.
Sorry, Warren, can you tell me which page that is, just so I can circle it in my notes?
It, it was on, I don't have hands.
Oh, it's.
The draft bylaw that was there, but it was.
This is Catherine, it's, it's point four. And the sentence is moving, and correct me if I'm wrong, Warren, moving of building structures and elements to other locations shall be considered only if no other preservation measures are practical or reasonable on the existing site. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I, I, I wrote my note to myself, that means I can request, argue, prefer, moving as the arguing that, well, it's impractical and unreasonable to keep it where it is, so I want to move it. But there's no specificity there, just like there isn't any specificity in the case of non-conforming structures being no more deleterious to the neighborhood, so I could do whatever I want. Or I can request approval to do whatever I want, put it that way. But that's just a comment about, I don't understand what that means in the real world if, if a case comes before you. And lastly, while amendments to a, to the new bylaw could, could come about at any time, I suppose, did the commission ever consider requiring kind of a formal review of the effectiveness of the bylaw after a period of time, maybe five or 10 years? Just to evaluate how's it going and if any changes are needed, but making it a formal requirement that it, a formal review as opposed to well, we'll wait till the squeaky wheel is loud enough and then we'll see if we can amend it.
Do they do that with any other bylaws?
Not that I am aware of.
Yeah, no, it's an interesting concept. You know, in my other life, 30 years ago, on Chairman of the Planning Board, there was a process, you know, every five years you had to review them, but we don't have anything in like that in Massachusetts, so, yeah, well, that's a good comment, you know, something to think about. Because you're absolutely correct, you know, we wait until the, the, the barn burns down, and then we said, gee, maybe we should do something about that.
Again, I'm, I'm very much in favor of, of the proposal. I'm just disappointed that there's no way to somehow provide incentive to a non-conforming property on a non-conforming lot to to retain the historic structure, but that's for another day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren, this is Catherine. Tom Gagin, discussion, questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin, good evening, Frank.
Good evening.
Nice to have two Messinas in one evening.
Messina, by the way, is like Smith.
Well, I also accused you some months ago when I saw the change of, of ownership on that property with the same first name for your wife that you had planned to move on up.
Yeah, right.
Having said that, you're still where you are. Frank, I'm very much in favor of, of what you're doing and what your commission is doing, and we're all blessed in this town to have very professional planners and people that really support and try to make us look intelligent from time to time. I have some comments which kind of follow through with what Warren started on, and then some general suggestions in terms of some language. On the first page, where we get down to number one, and you start talking about the incentive of 1.25. My concern is that the incentive should probably not be that specific, but be a sliding range, perhaps up to 1.5 if certain conditions and cost apply. And the reason I'd like to have the commission have a broader view in terms of incentivizing these properties, which is what Warren was talking about, is maybe the carrot has to be a little bit bigger at the expense of the size of the property, but the preservation is more important. Each of these issues that come before the Historic Commission are really very unique unto themselves. And to try to fit them in some formula box that is neat, if you take two and the square root of nine and divide by eight, you get an answer. I don't think that applies because there's a lot of creativity and a lot of research that has to be done by the commission to make these things work. So my suggestion under one is for you to consider, as the commission, to have more of a sliding range with a, a greater ability to incentivize, particularly if a property is of utmost importance to the town historically, all of the famous names attached to it. And also the issue that each of these preservations and, and moving and adjusting have a lot of cost associated with them. And sometimes it's, it's really kind of putting some lipstick on the pig, and sometimes it's really a major, major incentive that's needed to preserve and not allow the easy way out of waiting 18 months to, to move on and, and circumvent a process. So that my first suggestion would be to maybe think about, as I said three times already, a, a greater range that would be specifically under the control of the Conservation Commission to accomplish your goals. At the very bottom of page one, the bylaw currently proposes that the Zoning Board of Appeals shall be the Special Permit Granting Authority, and I added in conjunction with the HCA of, with incentives. In other words, there should be some hand-in-hand between the Special Permit and Granting Authority, and that the HCA should certainly be able to impose some incentives to that under the current bylaw.
Well, it does, it does come, excuse me, it does come, the process starts with the Historical Commission and its certification. But, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's the control, it's the control of the Historic Commission that is paramount in my, my view of what you're trying to accomplish. And what other members of the board have already pointed out is, sometimes we use language that is not specific. Hopefully not arbitrary, but you set yourself up, the commission sets itself up for petition, for potential lawsuits. And I'm gonna mention one of those in, in a moment. So as specific as we can be, it may help you in trying to plan out what the, what the commission is trying to accomplish. If we could turn to paragraph four on the Special Permit Priority, the second line down, I'm reading, historic buildings is placed but any such incentive is not. Why is the word "not" available to the original lot? Why is that word there, "not"?
Sorry, Tom, I'm just trying to follow, you're in number four, special permit.
I apologize, second paragraph of four, special permit, second paragraph, second sentence, three-quarters of the way over, there's the word "is," and then the next word is "not" available to the original lot.
Okay, when a historic building is removed from the site, the incentive shall be transferable to the new setting or sitting lot where the historic building is placed, but any such incentive is not available to the original lot. Oh, yeah, so we wanted to be very specific that if the historic building was picked up and moved to a different lot and put on a different lot, the incentive follows the historic structure to the new lot. But if you wanted to, on this old lot that you've moved your historic structure from, you couldn't use this incentive to build a big, you know, to yeah, vary your dimensional requirements, so that's why the word "not" is there.
Okay, that gets back, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that made sense.
It does now. And also, my first point of incentivizing, having the commission being able to incentivize that it's better to deal with us, with the ability for us to incentivize what we're trying to accomplish and not have you move the building to another lot. There may be, again, a cost factor there that makes a lot of sense. The same paragraph, the third line down, request based on input, and I put in approval from the Historical Commission. Again, trying to put the power where we need it to be. Is that clearer to put input and approval? Just a question.
Yeah, we can definitely.
Yeah, look at that.
Yeah.
And again, I'm repeating myself because I'm an old man, we're on the next page, building coverage. The second paragraph starts off with. We're on the next page, uh building coverage, um the second paragraph starts off with the maximum, and at the very end of it, it says by a factor uh no greater than one hundred and twenty-five percent, one point two five percent. Uh I crossed out no greater than one twenty-five, but up to one hundred and fifty percent. I just, the the I don't like the the inability for the commission not to be extremely creative in incentivizing people to do what is in the best interest of Chatham historically. And I I don't want to belabor that a point again, but perhaps you might think about more incentive uh and therefore greater power to nudge uh someone in a direction that you really would like them to be nudged into. I think the next question I have has already been answered, and that's under final requirements, findings requirement. Uh the first paragraph, number one, uh it starts off with that, that with the modification, and then near the end of that sentence, authorized, um these are deeded as such, aren't they, these required authorizations uh will go into a deed?
To to a preservation restriction?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, it would be registered to the county, yes.
Oh, okay, and then that would be approved by the uh select board, if I understand what we talked about earlier?
Right, that's correct.
Uh if we move on to the next page at the top, number seven, uh I think Arthur was starting to get at some of this um abstraction here, um and that is that it says, uh impact visual character, including views and vistas. Man, that's so subjective. Uh I think it's a can of worms. Um I don't know how you deal with it, but, you know, what I think is a beautiful view uh might be a sand and gravel operation or a quarry, and there's not a lot of people that are going to agree with me, because they don't know how valuable that resource is. So I don't know if you can be more specific there, or there's some way to be less subjective uh with the uh including uh views and vistas.
Welcome to the, welcome to the world of historic preservation.
No, I understand your job is difficult. Uh number ten, uh going back to sand and gravel operations, which was my thirty-five years of work, uh number ten, uses the word "noise". Man, that's a bugaboo legally. Um you cannot quantify noise, it's subjective, legally subjective. I suggest this, um I'm pounded into the ground every time I suggest it, but something which is quantifiable is the word "sound". So my suggestion is to eliminate the word "noise", subjective, and put in a uh very quantifiable word, which is sound and litter. Uh sound is measurable, noise is not. Noise, to me, could be uh listening to a acid rock band, and to some kid that's uh under a hundred and fifty years old, uh you know, listening to Beethoven could be a lot of noise. So just a suggestion.
Well, I think, I think, I think that suggestion goes, Ally goes back to the zoning board, right? These are their regular uh conditions.
Well, I argue this here, Frank, and I get thrown out.
No, it's 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 a good, good comment, and you know, how you put it down, how many dB, you know, right? Yes.
Well, yeah, at at the property line, I mean, well, again, uh I I've been taking a court on this, and uh the the issue of using the word "noise" is not going to get you anywhere legally, it's too subjective. But I can measure sound, and I can prove to you with the DBA meter what I'm generating. Those are really my comments. The major one is, I wish that you had more flexibility in terms of a sliding range on incentives. I really wish that uh you could incentivize things to get really what you want, not in a selfish way, but certainly in a way of preserving the town of Chatham. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, just one quick question. Now, the whole issue of of the one, two, five, or what, we spent a lot of time with that, and Ally did with with the ZBA, uh because you have the issue of of pushback relative to allowing too much, uh you know, too much coverage, too much, but it's something we can look at again, you know, especially we get more feedback.
Well, I I understand that, but the argument, again, that I'm trying to make is that the flexibility, the incentivizing uh this is going to allow you as the commission uh to get what you want uh in a nice way, in a, and as I said, change the size of the carrot, uh and you may be able to eliminate some of the issues that you are constantly up against in terms of people saying it's just costs too much to do what you want me to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Uh Bob Wertschfter.
Yeah, I'm going to be real brief here. First of all, uh does does this um ability to expand the property supersede requirements in the in the conservation zone and in the flood zones in terms of uh our restrictions that already exist?
No, so those are, yeah, those would supersede this, these incentives, so a lot of the...
Can we write that into this bylaw, please?
Sure.
Yeah, and then um, I I, you know, I I have the feeling that um just just briefly that this is going to have the same overall effect of our um our our um accessory dwelling units that, you know, that it's just not, that I don't, I'm agreeing with everybody else that this, the incentives that we're giving here are are very unlikely to uh have a major effect. I mean, I think this is good, but I think if we we want to preserve some of these buildings, we will have to do more. It it it, in in some cases, it may, it may involve changing the um the use, I mean, uh allowing for a a house to become a hotel or or and and expand with a new, you know, element. So I think there there, you probably have some of that power now, and the and the um zoning board may have some of that, but that's where, that's where some of the saving could could take place, and I think maybe i- as a next step, that needs to be part of this.
Well, just, you know, this is a beginning. Uh this is not, you know, you don't, the not, I don't think there are many, if any one or two, you know, towns in the state that have anything like this, it's it's just a start, uh you know, but you said, you know, how strong can you get? You know, we could become Nantucket, make the whole, the whole island an historic district, and then, you know, then you can't paint your your front door unless you get permission. So uh Chatham's kind of an interesting place, you know, we've got three or four historic districts, and we've got a lot of the town which is not, which is only the demolition delay, but uh and but I do appreciate the comment, but we we feel that if we at least start, you know, and get the public uh involved in these kinds of uh uh legislation, you know, could help us to begin the dialogue when somebody comes before us and say, you know, all right, I'll save it, but what are you going to give me? You know, there's no tax incentives, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, we're going to take another look at that. Thank you very much, Bob.
Great. One one more question. Uh Ally, you mentioned seventy-five years as being the requirement?
Seventy, I'm sorry. Yeah, seventy-five years is the threshold before any uh property or home structure can can, has to come before the historical commission to determine whether or not it is or it is not historically significant. It's not automatic, it's just that's the threshold that we start looking.
Because, I mean, we got some, it won't be very long before, uh you know, port post World War Two, buildings are seventy-five years old, and I'm not sure too many of them are really historic, so.
Yeah, I've I've been historically significant five years ago, yeah.
Yeah. All right, that's all I have, thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Um Bob Dubus. Bob Dubus, are you muted?
Yeah, I'm I took my mute to find it. I I think uh everybody's going on the positive side of this, and uh I I think it's the, I think it's coming, but I know it's going to take a little bit of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Bob. Roger Griffin.
Um, no, I just, I, no, the only, uh the only, I guess, comment I had is, or just a thought, uh is I think the whole thing is great, it's a long time coming, and it's going to take some time for this to make sense, but it was definitely on the right track. But when you talk about building coverage, I mean, some of the properties we're talking about are going to be in town, uh but building coverage, uh usually someone's going to want to make the house, the house larger, wouldn't we be compromising, trying to restrict how many, you know, septic systems and the like? I mean, we kind of, is that going to be, could that be, um, not say an issue, but could that be sort of, in some instances, a holdback or a concern? Just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the septic...
Does that come into play? Must at some point.
Yeah, so regardless, the septic, um, you know, requirements would still say that stay the same for the number of bedrooms, we would just allow for an additional, you know, footprint, if you will, of the structure, but the health department requirements are the same requirements, so those wouldn't change. So however many, you know, um bedrooms you would be allowed, uh currently, you'd still have that same requirement, so this wouldn't allow you to expand.
Yeah.
Right, but the same, so I just have a one more question, it's sort of like, we must have a fair amount of properties that, you know, that that this this applies to, that this uh that are in town, that probably are already, you know, are pretty soon to be uh hooking up to town sewerage or have the ability to, am I wrong?
No, you're correct, but we do have a net neutral policy for sewers, so if you, or your sewer, um, the number of bedrooms that you're allowed on your sewer is based upon how many you could have under your septic as well, so it's it's net neutral, so you wouldn't, you know...
Oh, okay, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you. And I'll just say this one, just out of curiosity.
That's an important issue. Most people confuse it, they think just because you're on sewer, you can add a lot more bedrooms, that's not true.
Oh, I realized that, but I didn't know what it, but obviously I could see that maybe, and that was occasion, probably, you know, have maybe the, an easier possibility, having maybe one or two more. Uh just, it's just, just, I'm just curious, on building setbacks, I'm saying, wow, I mean, zoning is that required setback in zoning districts, but in no case less than five, I'm just, and this is just curiosity, where would we ever want to have some, where would we be looking for something less than, uh or maybe down to as little as five feet uh as a setback? I'm just curious. Any, as an example, something, this is just my, totally my my curiosity.
No, yeah, so some of them, just looking for the setbacks now as we talk, um, some of the setbacks can be relatively small that we have currently, um, let's see, sorry, I'm just looking as we're talking. So like in a GB two situation, um, they have a fifteen-foot setback, um, so, you know, to be able to expand, again, we just wanted to give the flexibility, the zoning board of appeals wouldn't have to be allowed to give that much, um, they would have the discretion, but we just wanted to make sure, you know, we had this flexibility, but we would love to hear, obviously, what, you know, you guys thought of that, um, you know, incentive. We just wanted to make sure it wasn't incentive, because some of these are rather small. All right.
All right, okay, I got you.
This is Catherine. Warren, I do see your hand raised.
Oh, yes. Um, for Frank and Ally, I didn't ask on my list of questions, but um it now comes up again, is, did the commission consider um as an extra incentive or as an incentive the ability to approve an extra ba- uh bedroom, for example, add an extra bedroom?
Yeah, so so we don't really, we wouldn't have that ability, or the commission wouldn't, it would have to be through the, you know, health department and the sewer commission, water and sewer commission, which has, already has, you know, a strict set of standards, so we would have to see if, you know, those would, could be revised, but I think that, I I think that that would be a big discussion with them, um, but we could definitely have it.
But it would be a real incentive to a person to retain an existing structure if they could, one, in increase the footprint, and two, add a bedroom, that's all.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that as the incentive.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm I'm...
Okay.
That's, that's...
Great. Um, so this is Catherine, I am going to ask if there's any members of the public who are connected, who have comments or questions for Frank Messina and Ally regarding this uh proposed bylaw amendment? Anyone connected? I don't hear anyone. Warren, you still have your hand up, or are you all right?
No.
You're all right, all right. I have no further comments, I think this discussion has been extremely fruitful, uh and a lot of good uh points have come up from the board. Um, I think it's really clear that we're all in support of historic preservation, and if anything, we'd like to see something that could be stronger and more effective uh uh in its use and application um in order to encourage people to preserve historic structures. I do have to say, um, Ally and I were talking today, and I think the thing that's really necessary is that the new owners want to do the preservation, uh because there's all, you know, there is going to be additional expense involved and additional restrictions, so even providing these incentives may not work for all new property owners, so...
Right.
The only thing that I would say, and I I heard that also from some of the suggestions that um other board members made, is that to continue to think, is there anything that we can add that will even encourage those people who may not be personally interested in preserving historic structures, but that would really encourage that preservation. But uh I have no further comments, I think it's been that, again, just to say what I said in the beginning, you've, obviously, all of you have put in a lot of work, and it's a lot more clear and more definite and more, um, what's the word, useful than its earlier stages, and uh it's just, you've done a terrific work. I think the comments from the board tonight, I hope you found them useful, I thought a lot of great ideas really came up. Um, so, uh I don't know, any uh final comments from you, Frank or Ally, before we adjourn?
Well, thank you very much. Uh, yes, I do appreciate some of the comments, and it's a balance, and it's a trade-off, excuse me, uh and uh and we're we're kind of, you know, walking that fine line, you know, of how far can we go to encourage someone to save an historic home? Uh, you know, people come before the historical commission, they have no intention at all to save it. Uh, so, you know, I'm not sure what percentage, and I think it one of, somebody alluded to it, you know, that this may be like the ADA, you know, the accessory dwelling unit, I hope not, and and but we do often have uh people, when they come before the commission, and they're kind of interested in restoring it, you know, they're not sure, and it's a dialogue, and, you know, well, all right, Alistair, but what what can you give me? Is there a tax incentive? You know, something like that. So it's it's a conversation, uh if we put the demo delay in, you know, to have a conversation during that eighteen months of, let's reconsider it, because eighteen months is a long time, ties up a lot of money, but it's not necessarily the case for everybody. So, again, thank you very much, we really appreciate your support, and uh I'll continue supporting Ally as she does all the work.
Yes, great, yes. Isn't that the truth? Yes. What about a tax incentive, if I can just ask about that? Is that something we can do?
Currently, currently under state law, there is incentives for uh, for instance, Montemay Theater, uh what he was going to do, I don't know what's going to happen, he, that building is on the national reg- or is a historic structure and and could be on the national register. If you, if you modify, improve, change a an historic structure for, and it's for a commercial purpose, you can get up to forty percent tax credits, but that's not for private dealt dwellings. And a lot of people want to change that, but let me tell you, that that can open up Pandora's Box if, uh because there's a lot of homes in Massachusetts which would qualify for historic, uh so it's it's a big deal, but a lot of people, you know, want to push for that, but right now it's only applicable if you are using that historic structure for commercial purposes.
All right, great, thank you for that clarification. Ally, did you have some comments?
Yeah, just, just really quickly, I just want to say thank you. Um, I know that the planning board understands that this is a process, and we welcome, you know, all comments, and we just think that makes a better bylaw, so, thank you. So thank you for all your thoughtfulness.
Thank you. Well, thank you for all the work you've put into it and all the very intelligent work you've put into it. So with that being said, I think it's time to adjourn. So may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn, Bob Dubus.
Thank, thank you, Bob. Could I have a second?
Second.
So let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru approve.
Warren Chang.
Warren Chang approve.
Tom Gagin.
I don't approve.
Tom.
I approve.
Bob Wordsafter.
Approve.
Bob Dubus.
More than approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin approve.
And this is Catherine. I approve. And let's note the time as 8:50, that's 8:50 in the evening. We're adjourning the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for participating and for sticking with it. And enjoy what's left of the evening. Thank you.